Okay, we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands one nation under that indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so this is a workshop, so I'm just gonna take roll call for attendance, so when Terry does get back to the minutes, she can do it. She did get back, she's just got the jet lag. Member Allen?
Present.
Member Mouchay, present. Member Hefnecker?
Present.
Member Ainucci?
Present.
Member Carl?
Present.
Member Kelly, absent at the moment. Member Umberto?
Present.
Alright, and our professionals, we have Attorney Cassidy?
Present.
And we have Engineer Higgins?
Present.
And that is all, our building inspector's not here tonight. Is anyone here for Ten Winchester? You are. You can come on up, and then just give us your name as you come up, and your spell, the spelling of your last name.
Abraham Samet, S-A-M-E-T.
Alright, so what we're gonna do is have our engineer just read the comments that you probably did not yet receive, I'm guessing, at this point, because we're, yeah, we were down, it's okay, we were down, our secretary this week was away, and so we're all scrambling a little bit, so, but we're gonna have Mr. Higgins review that for us, and we're gonna put it on, on the roll for the minutes here.
Alright, so comment number one. The plan used review provided by the building inspector indicates that the proposed floor area ratio exceeds the statute of law allowed, and that such proposed addition requires bearings from zoning work fields. Site plan provided indicates that a variance position by the zoning work field along its 14th, 20th, and 4th, copy of the variance decision has been provided to the planning board. Based upon review appears the plan is consistent with the issued bearings. Dimensions for the addition, twenty-seven foot, two inch by thirty-five foot, should be provided on the site plan, and it should be listed as a one-story to ensure consistency with variance. Number two, there appears to be some double text bearings and distances that should be cleaned up on the final plan. Number three, the properties within the SR20 zoning district and the added addition will meet all of the bulk compartments with the exception of the floor area ratio. Number four, our revision date should be added to the plan to differentiate it from prior versions.
A bearing and a distance on this line, there's multiple.
The distance double text?
Yes. It probably would be just freeze that, freeze that, that. So this could be off, and that could be on. Correct. If you just, it is, there's just an extra layer with the test that's still on, I can read that off. And then add the dimensions for the building, and list it as a one-story. And add a revision date to the plan, and that would be ten. Oh, there'll be a new revision date, because they'll add these dimensions.
So, in light of what appear to be relatively minor, just map change, map edits, I would recommend that I prepare a resolution for action at our meeting on the 22nd, subject to those map corrections, you don't need to make those map corrections now, you can wait, await the resolution, there'll be conditions of approval. For right now, you don't need to submit anything else, I'm gonna prepare a resolution for the 22nd, which will have conditions. If, if accepted by the planning board, you would then make your changes after the resolution. So I, at this point, you don't need to submit anything, it is a type-two action under secret, because it's a single addition to a single family house.
So I understand correctly that it's going to be taken action on the 22nd.
Act, we'll, we'll discuss action on the 22nd, so.
Yes.
I won't make any promises, but, so we'll see you on the 22nd.
Do you have any questions of us?
Um, basically that's about it, I mean, we should, the planning board is gonna vote on the actual, I mean, I actually, it's admitted, the draft of the decision, you can see that all the minutes that was discussed on the meeting, that tomorrow they can actually, actually vote on and sign.
Okay, yeah, and we'll get that from them.
So, I believe, so, I believe this is the connection that I'm gonna do.
Right. Okay, great.
Just one, just one question. Wouldn't we want these comments incorporated in the site plan before we make a resolution?
So comments like these, which are, which
They're minor.
They're minor, we would make, they would be listed in the resolution, subject to correction of those comments. Dave, the applicant would, after the resolution, submit a final plan. The chair wouldn't sign it until Dave said, David issue a written letter saying, yes, they've satisfied those comments.
I don't want him to walk away thinking everything is fine.
No, no.
He's gonna get something back from council.
Okay.
You know, the resolution.
And make all the changes on the plot plan.
Right, in the, in the resolution.
Well, understand that. Okay.
Alright. Second on the agenda is 19 Fort She Street.
William D'Amelio.
It's D apostrophe capital A, M E L I O.
Great, and you're the owner?
Yes.
So, I think we're gonna let our engineer just go through his, his notes.
Alright, so, the application involves reconstruction of a single-family dwelling that was damaged by fire. The application has been referred to the planning board under section 200 dash 25.1, because the proposed second floor makes the house larger than those in the heat consented, and relates mainly to architectural design and paraport dwelling. The lot is in the SR10 zone with access from Fort She Street. Comment number one on the plan, the structure appears to be largely contained within the footprint of the prior dwelling, therefore there are no new setbacks to consider. Based on the bulk table provided and the FAR, the floor-to-area ratio calculation, does not appear that any bearings is required. Number two, no changes to utilities, grading or access appear to be proposed. And number three, any AF to submit, but we do not believe the reconstruction of the single-family dwelling would be subject to secret, we defer to the board's opinion.
Okay.
So we did wanna talk about, a little bit about the architectural.
Do you want me to run through mine?
Yeah, oh yeah, would you do that?
Sure. So this is on for site plan and architectural review, I'm trying not to repeat everything Dave said. The project is not subject to 239, it's not within 500 feet. Because this is a site plan, a public hearing is not required for the site plan review, but a public hearing may be held in the discretion of the planning board, and then applicants provide materials and samples for, for review as part of the architectural.
So, one of the things, I was looking at the plans, the, the, the house itself, just flat front completely, as I see it, right?
Except for the roofing that's already overgrown.
Right. Yeah, is there anything that you guys can do to that, to make it, the features stand out a little bit? Because in that neighborhood, that would be, you know, it's just flat, there's nothing there, you know what I mean? Except that one wall, so.
So, I did have a question, too.
Sure.
If I basically extended that flooring from one end to the other end, maybe not even completely to the end, but like, almost like a soffit that comes out instead, so that the whole front is covered?
So, but on the first floor?
Right, I would come out like on the first floor, like almost like a, the original roof line in a sense, maybe.
I think they call it an eyebrow.
Yeah.
There, there in your, I'm wondering. Yeah, well, we pull it up right here.
So what you're saying is that it's similar to like the cocoa cheese, where it's just flat up front?
Right, exactly.
A little dormer, or a little orang.
And that street mostly has like smaller bungalow-type homes, they're all kinda cute, like different little things. Couple of, couple of ones that have two-story.
There's two next to me, and then there's the new one up the block.
Right, yeah, I think there might be one across the street.
Yeah, there's one across street, and one up the block, two houses, three, and then one at the top of the block.
Right, yeah, I saw that one, yeah.
So we're starting to bring the roof line out a little bit, maybe like a foot or something?
Yeah, just, you know.
Give it a little depth.
Like you could see, here's some renderings, that would be with the addition, right there, that's the northwest corner and the southeast corner, I think. So the shed is the back.
Okay, oh, I see, I see, oh, so the shed's the back.
Yeah, so right now, it's, that's the front, on the left side, that's the front of the house, right? Right, so it's like, there's four windows.
Or even like you said, so even at that, like
At the split, I was thinking coming out like with the original roof line?
Yeah.
Just so that it would be an overhang across the whole front of the house, is that alright?
That would be improvement.
That would be an improvement, for sure, you know?
Make it two order ones.
Yeah.
Jeff, Jeff, that's very common, I, I just spoke with him on the side, I, they call it an eyebrow.
Yes.
Goes across the whole length of the house.
Right.
He says he would be up to doing that.
Right, yeah, so.
I think it would look better, I mean, if it, if it's the house for you.
You know, if it was old neighborhood, that's fine.
Well, it's not crazy, crazy cost.
Yeah.
Shade over the windows.
Just a little shade over the lower windows and stuff like that. Right, that's why we originally kept the, the front of the street covered, but
Yeah.
My thoughts were to actually ask you guys to do, then already to go across, but I thought with it instead.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be, then a V, but it'd be a slope.
Slope, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Look like almost the original soffit sticking out past.
Right.
Right.
Give some depth, too.
Right, gives a little depth to it.
But I would bring it out probably as far as that is, it's four feet.
Okay.
Right.
This way, like when you're under it, you really don't get that, getting your hand on any of that.
Right.
Almost got a whole porch.
Are you talking about fixing that to it, or are you talking about cantilevering that?
Well, we, I would just cut that out then, and just, and just do the new tear gun, like on the front.
Gotcha, yeah, yeah.
Because then I wouldn't really need that. Unless my architect says, hey, you know, we can make that loop.
Yeah.
And then maybe I don't come out the full four feet on the other, the other, like, not like two or three feet.
Yeah, and just have him draw something up that we could take a look at as well. You know, but that would be the idea, that'd be, I think
Just to break up the straightness.
Exactly, you know, and break up, you know, for the eye.
What's the status of the house right now, is that like, is it, are you redoing the whole house, is it burned down?
Fire.
Oh, redirt to the ground?
No, 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 it was in the attic, I think.
It was an attic fire, right, so, first to the roof, and then the two bedrooms took abuse, and then fire, you know, fire came in, they had to break the windows, it went down.
Sorry to hear that.
She rocked, they walked down, the whole thing, so everything's, basically gotta be gutted, ain't it?
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a huge cost, uh, you know, addition, I would, I would say it would look nice for you, I would think, you know, for sure, the whole, with the whole length.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, like, you said, you know, they add shape to the lower floor windows.
And then what we need too, is whatever the materials that you're using, you know, that you're planning on, the, whatever the, the materials are, need samples of the material, and the actual serial numbers. The colors.
So it's like Benjamin Moore?
Right.
Final signing?
Well, I haven't even gotten to that yet, newer and sort of power.
Yeah, and you may not have done it yet, so when you do, we just need those samples to see them.
Well, I would need that probably before the next meeting, right?
Yeah, if that's for the approvals, you would need that.
I mean, there's nothing else other than that, so, unfortunately, I didn't sit like this, you know, I mean, kind of like insurance money, but that's another thing.
Oh, yeah.
Any shutters next to the windows or anything, or?
Um, I don't have any, if the plan is the point, no.
I mean, that, that would look, that would help, too, you know, it would look nice.
You know, just the front, you know?
Right, yeah.
A lot of houses build up just
Just the front.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, make it nice, so, yeah, maybe if you guys consider doing that.
Color of the door, something like that, you know, if you redo it a different color, you make up shutters, or that same genre or something. Right.
What do you plan on doing then siding?
Yeah, you know, something.
Yeah.
Chances are I don't go on ladders anymore, anyway.
From a ladder?
Not a good year.
Actually, it all happened from September to September.
Alright, well, it's over now.
So, yes, that's what we need, you know, and that's just a part of the
So some colors, the design that we're gonna use, any material that we're gonna use.
Exactly, and, yeah, just, and, and the sample of the siding, and we just file that, put it together, and that's, and that's what we need.
Does it need shingle samples as well, like for, like for roof repairs, or not necessarily, it's not?
If we can have a little bit of a description, most, most folks say architectural, you know.
Charcoal, whatever.
Charcoal.
Right, of the shingle, right, and then the
Deciding in the shingle.
I'm assuming he's not putting like a neon green or
Right, but the exact types. The exact, exact types, they'll give you it like, like Elizabeth just said, is that it's gonna be, you know, if it's Benjamin Moore, it'll give you, it's Benjamin Moore, this color, and here's the code. You know, so, we, you know, you put that together for us, and your architect, I'm sure, could do that for you.
So you're, like, see the side view there, how you don't have much of an overhang in the front or the back? Are you, are you planning on putting soffits out there, like, you know, on the, onto the main roof up there where the gutters are?
Because it's basically, I guess, the basic soffit, it's only like two foot.
Okay, two foot, okay, yeah, it, I mean, it doesn't look
Yeah, I know you're
Right, on the top.
Yeah, because I seen a lot where, you know, they're right up against it, and the gutters backed up, it's going right.
We're gonna have at least a two foot, instead of the, instead of the soft rack, you know? Yeah, that would look really So, yeah, no, we're gonna extend the two feet past the normal.
Yeah, okay.
And like I said, so if I do that on maybe two, maybe three feet out, it'll look a little bit better.
Yeah.
And if he wants, ask the architect, you know, is it easier to tie it into what we're showing as a four foot? Or do I just eliminate that and show the whole thing out four feet?
I think I would eliminate that, and then show the whole thing out, you know, you think so, yeah.
Because then two months is going on.
Right, 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 yeah.
Yeah, because you would eliminate that anyway, putting, putting the other out, so.
And I would have him bring that roof line out, and the bottom left one, out another two feet as well, which he maybe you said he's gonna do, right now it shows he's going straight up, but that would look nice, the, the bottom left, yeah, so the bottom left picture looking straight.
Roof itself, you should have an extended Y.
Yeah.
Oh, Y?
Yeah, 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 a little past the actual structure of the house, that. They'll give it more depth as well, but, yeah, it'll look nice, yeah, it does look that.
Oops, sorry. You know?
Computer for the computer later. Yeah, she'll go just straight up.
So there's some, there's some overhang.
Right.
Yeah, you see it.
But, but doesn't it show it on the other one, though, like, the, you know, straight at it?
Oh, you mean here?
Right, right, yeah, you want it.
You want that roof?
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, it'll look good, it'll look good.
Good, okay, yeah, so I think that's it.
That's it?
Yeah, any questions you have for us?
Nah, did we both ask each other?
Do it together.
She's pretty, pretty smooth right now.
Yeah.
Compared to everything else. Alright, so, do I get a notice, that's the only question, do I get a notice?
No, if you get those, if you round those things up, and again, if you're using an architect, they, they're familiar with this stuff.
Yeah.
You know, so just tell them, you know, you need to, you'll figure out the materials, then put that in a list to us, and then a sample of the siding. You know, if you give us, you know, a description, like counsel said, of the roof, what you're putting up there, you know, putting a three tab, putting, you know, whatever, yeah, that would be good. And then just have him redo, add the straight across.
Straight across, and make sure, you know, extend
Bring that roof line over as well, yeah, that'll look much better.
And then, you know, and then you get that into us, and then
So next
Should I get that in before the 22nd?
Well, um
Or do I, can I come in with?
Do, do you wanna accept it for the 22nd, or do you wanna wait? That's, I have no objection, this is a minor
Right, it's a minor thing, I don't, I don't have an objection to doing it. No, if you get, get it in as quickly as you can.
Okay.
And then we can look at it on the 22nd.
That'd be great.
Normally, we, we would, we don't look at new stuff until after submission date, but for something this not, there's no, there's no engineering issue.
Right.
I have no objection to having it, you know, but just get it to us, so that we can look at it on the, on the 22nd.
Because there would be a date that it has to be in by?
The 30th of September.
So this is us saying we're giving you an accommodation, so as early as possible, as, as quick as
Yeah, as soon as you can do it.
Not five o'clock on the 22nd.
Even, even this wasn't, you know, added in the week.
Yeah, yeah. Okay?
Alright, I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course, yeah, you got your till sees, sir.
Alright. Alright. 123, 125 Elm Street, and I think, what's up, Mike? Dave?
Steve, everybody?
It should be on.
Is it on?
It, it is, I hear, I hear it coming through, but I don't know why it's not louder.
Talk a little louder.
Is that for work for us, or for the, just the actual?
It's for the recording.
Okay.
I don't know.
I mean, it's definitely on, I could hear it when he was tapping it, but
I would like to hear him, Mike.
I think he turned it on from there, some volume up there.
I was told never to touch that.
A poll was, I'm a rule breaker.
Well, you weren't told that, were you, Paul?
No, we were not told that.
It's ringing, your council told you not to touch it.
They just didn't want Elizabeth touching it.
Please, please, don't touch.
Somebody just texted, don't touch.
We're watching you.
Yes, we won't touch it no more.
But everything back to where it was.
Did you see the cursor go around, and go crazy, like, no, 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 don't touch it.
Alright, Dave.
Then thinking you're fine.
I guess they hear us.
They hear us.
Mike, you may just receive the
Yeah.
So we'll go, we'll go through these, okay? The introduction, I know we've talked about it before, so, let's get ahead. So these are the comments on the plans, as note number one, as noted in the whole table, the following bearings is required. Motor vehicle shop with a 200 feet of renovation area. Lot size, front yard setback, rear yard setback, and increase of non-conforming bulk, and storage of vehicles within any required yard, so you have those noted on the whole table. Number two, during the planning meeting on September 24th, 2024, we discussed that section 200 dash 51.0, supplemental requirements for motor vehicle repair and paint shop, the motor vehicle sale and service, permits up to five licensed vehicles requiring minor repairs being left outside for a period of more than 48 hours. And that variance for the proposed parking of vehicles may require either a variance or a change in zoning. Applicants should advise if they can seek in either or limiting the number of vehicles being parked on site. Yeah, I mean, at this time, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we'll probably seek a variance from the ZBAN, we'll probably add that to the application at this time. So, and then if, if there's issues with that, we'll make an appearance before the village board and have that discussion, but at this time, we'll
So you're going to the ZBAN?
Yeah, we have to for all the other variances anyway, so we may as well add this one to that list at this time.
Right, okay.
So Dave? Um, is it, is it no more than 48 hours, or more than 48 hours? Because it says for a period of more than
Permits up to five, up to five vehicles requiring minor repairs being left outside for a period of more than 48 hours.
More than, so, okay, so it's, it's, it doesn't limit it to
So it's less than 48 hours?
Less than 48 hours.
So it should say no more than 48?
No, I, I think you could have more than five cars, as long as it's less than 48 hours.
Right. Oh, so you're saying, you're reading it as more than five?
Of more than 48 hours.
Five cars can't be parked there for long term, more than five cars.
More than two days.
Short term, in and out, quickie, you could have as many as will reasonably fit.
Right.
But you can't have the same.
Same five cars more days, basically.
Correct.
Sorry if that wasn't clear. I thought I got it correctly.
I will double check the
Alright, so you're gonna request a variance, so you're gonna add that to the
It's, yeah.
Uh, number three, resilient codes, mental off-street parking could be located on separate lot within 500 feet of some property. The applicant has provided a parking license agreement. While we defer to the planning board's legal counsel for review of the license agreement, we would recommend that it include an meets and bounds description of the license area. I think right now it just shows like a, an aerial line. Yeah, we can do that, that's not, I'm, I'm speaking as if this is on, and it's not, yes, we can Four, as noted on the plan, it is proposed consolidate tax lots 207 dash 1 dash 2, and 207 dash 1 dash 3 into a single lot. Consolidation of the lots by filing in the county clerk's office should be a condition of any approval granted by the planning board. Number five, previously proposed six-foot five violent fence along the rear property line has been eliminated from the plan. The applicant advises that a recent site meeting with the county resulted in the county preferring to have the existing fence remain in the roof of the new fence, and then correspondence confirming acceptability by the county as forthcoming. Yes, I'm still Number six, the submitted site plan includes a landscaping plan prepared by Karen Aaron, the license for instance, the architect. The proposed landscaping is limited to 14 shrubs and one tree in the front of the auto repair shop. Existing trees located between the property and the heritage trail have been shown on sheet 205. The planning board should review the adequate season of proposed landscape. Number seven, the plan proposes a chain link fence with privacy slats along the northern side of the leased vehicle parking area. The applicant should also consider providing screen of apartment area from Elm Street and the adjacent lots. So this is for the lease? Um, we've talked, please, see if that's even possible.
The one across the street?
Yes.
You just put a fence on that.
Put a fence, do you want to put a fence to the other side? Yeah, well, I think the, if you look at the plan, the only section of the new chain link fence with privacy slats is the section between the proposed parking area and the other area we want to buy for a tier three case.
We already did the front.
You added that, so we'll add it to the map.
Did you guys get a permit to do that? Yeah, okay.
Right, so we gotta add the fence, I'll, I'll challenge for that. As the screening to the adjacent properties, there's another lot, I believe it's a residential lot. To the, if you're looking at the parking area, you click right. I know, I mean, I know there's some trees in it, but I don't know how, the decision was how much trees, like, you didn't
Alright, let's see. That one? You want that page or another page?
I think there's a, there's a page that shows the fence a little more detailed.
That one, and let me see.
So you're talking about
Up here, hold on.
Can you, can you hand down the
Where do you want?
Now, you see right there, it says proposed chain link fence? Yes. There's a gate there, and the fence is shown, the only new fence is shown on the, basically along that left side of the parking area. Also now, leave the saying that the fence has also been installed along Elm Street? Right? And then I guess the question is, how about the other side, where you, you have a residence to the right?
Here.
Yeah, to the right of that is a residence, right? This is a residential property on the to the, to the top? Scroll up just a little bit.
Alright, this is not a touchscreen, so
So we already put in a wall couch. We already put, this one, you know, it's the gate asking what's happening in this property, and Right. Okay, I mean, I know there's some vegetation there, but I guess it would be the leaves drop.
This is the leased area, correct? And that's gonna be for car storage?
No, that's for employee park.
That's all gonna be employee parking, yes? Okay, but there isn't gonna be any car storage from the auto body, from the mechanics or anything? Okay, just make clear.
How many spots are there, Mike? Do you know?
Uh, it looks like twenty-five, twelve, thirteen, so it just makes you know.
No, it's twenty-five. We would make that a condition of approval, that there's no car storage there, it's also a term of the lease that they presented.
Oh, that there's no car storage in it, on the lease?
No, it's, it's for the staff, it's for the in and out.
Okay.
Mike, the, uh, the four thousand feet above. Is that in support of the auto body shop, or is that going to be something else?
I apologize, I was taking notes while you were talking about the fort, can you repeat the question?
I'm sorry?
I was taking notes based on what you were talking about before, can you repeat the question?
No, what I'm saying is, there's a two thousand foot extension on the bottom. Currently, and you're looking at a four thousand foot extension on the top. Is that for offices?
That's correct.
Is that gonna be retail offices?
I think it's for visits.
Just to support.
That's a lot of office space.
Just to support the body shop.
Okay.
Uh, is it the addition? Nope, hold on. I'm getting there.
So yeah, there's a bit of space, it's allocated, how storage and vice versa.
Storage office office.
I'm sorry?
Those offices are not very big.
It's not a matter of the offices are not very big, what you're showing now. We're familiar with certain things that happen later in life, and they become other offices and rented out, rented out space. If it's rented out space, where are those people gonna park?
I understand.
Across the street?
Uh, that one.
A bit, yeah, well, and the apartment for this bill, it's employee related, based on whether it is for the auto body shop or something else, the parking's across the street, it's office space anywhere in slicing.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. And we've seen in other areas of Monroe, that all of a sudden these small offices become larger storage areas. And trucks like Prime and other major vehicles come in, and it's a storage area. And then you see smaller box trucks come and make deliveries out of there. This facility is for an auto body shop.
That's correct.
It's not for a tractor trailer depot, or anything like that.
Not that I am aware of any, but if there are additional conditions or whatnot, that we need to place on a plan to make it more comfortable.
As, as you know, we've already for the Cheesecake Factory, there are signs up, no tractor trailer deliveries.
If a tractor trailer could get into this site, I wanna see it.
Oh, I'd like, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to see it down there on Elm Street also.
I don't wanna challenge it.
Okay.
We can certainly do the same thing, where we can restrict access to certain vehicles. Uh, no tractor trailer deliveries along the frontage, things of that nature, I don't think there's an issue.
We can, we can also limit.
I know it's not Route seventeen Elm Street. But we've seen the problems on seventeen M. And we don't wanna see the problems here, and we don't wanna see the use, once something is approved, all of a sudden, all the offices are taken away and it becomes storage for something else.
And the tractor trailer's parking along the front of the property, I think it would be, sure. So, but we, we could certainly work with the village to practice things for similar levels, like you could on chocolate cheese.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, there being, um, granted approval based on the square footage, so parking calculations are on the square footage of that being in office. Um, were that to convert, it would be, they, it, were they to convert, if they did not come back to the planning board, they would be in violation of their.
But Elizabeth, they already, they already said that, yeah, maybe, it might be offices later on, and the people that are in those offices will park across the street.
But that's accounted for in the approval.
Right, the calculation.
Their parking calculation.
The parking calculation is based on, on that.
And I have more comments, I have more comments on the lease, so, um, did Dave catch you all with his comments?
I don't think so.
I think he's on eight.
He wants to number eight.
Eight, yeah.
So, um, but did, did we conclude what we wanted to do with anything with the screening? I mean, I guess if the, if the only thing parking on the opposite side of the street there is, um, employee parking, then I guess the board should just consider how much, if any, screening they would like to see along Elm Street or to the residential adjacent property.
Just, just be aware of, um, two hundred forty-four I, I've had that come up a couple. Um, I don't know that is the buffer requirement for loading and parking between residential and commercial. So, um, that may, that actually came up on a couple of tonight's applications, uh, for those properties that are, um, it's ten feet for parking, two hundred feet for loading, um, obviously loading on the, that, that's not an issue there, um, but just be aware of that.
And I mean, it won't make you work extra hard tonight, would you possibly be able to bring up one, two, three Elm on Google Maps? And we could take a look at a street view?
You're really making me forget my paycheck.
I think it might be beneficial while we're all here, and see what we can see.
And this is relating to Dave's question, yes, okay.
I think it makes sense, cause then we can just.
Yeah, because I, I agree, you know, if those, if the foliage comes down and you got people living right there and they're gonna look at a parking lot now, uh, people going in and out.
It may also already be a parking lot.
Yeah.
It's a partier parking lot.
But it's not being used, like what we're talking about.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously get approval for Frontier.
Right.
So I can't say for sure, uh, yes, but.
And Mike, didn't they just get bought by Verizon?
That's what I heard, yeah. I don't know that for a fact, but that's.
Yeah, I think that's a fact.
I'm waiting for Verizon files, so I'll tell you that, as soon as possible.
Yeah. Would that change you guys' lease and all that with them, or Verizon, you'll have to deal with another leasing from the parking lot? You have to deal with, if they sold it, you have to, with that.
Well, they're still bound by the contract, but they can give you a ninety day.
Right.
Well, we'll talk, we'll talk about that.
We didn't get to yet.
They might want that back.
Oh, you mean my little man?
Yeah. I'm looking at. Google Maps came up, and it has our own.
There we go.
You want me to, you want me to go for a little walk?
He's got my trail.
That's it.
So there's a fence now, though, to the halfway down the middle, uh, like, halfway across the lot, widthwise, all the way down in the front.
I think we have, we have an entire from the property line and across the back, that's a match.
So I think the plan should show the, the privacy fence on to the left, running from the front.
We haven't changed it all the way around.
So the privacy, from what I saw, and I didn't go into the lot, but on Elm Street, there's the, the new chain link with the green.
Slats.
It's not in slats, it's like, it's like a different, I haven't seen it, it's like fuzzy stuff.
Oh, yeah.
It's like ice and true, Christmas tree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe we can put the slats around.
Yeah.
The entire perimeter around the existing chain link fence. I mean, that would certainly screen the parking lot.
Yes.
Without causing any issue with separation distances.
Could you gentlemen in the back just keep it down a little bit, because it's, it's, it's coming, we think interfering too with the, uh, the microphones? Sorry, go ahead, Dave.
Um.
I'm Mike.
Essentially, we could add the privacy slats all the way around that chain link fence, um, that was.
Is that, is that new, cause I didn't get to go inside it, is that new all the way around?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
Right, that's what I saw.
It's only about four feet high.
That's all you need for screening from the vehicle.
Are you gonna repave it by any chance? Is it gonna be repaved by any chance? Well, it's just a question, it's not, you know, uh, cause it does look rather bad, you know, you have, I'd be careful about, you know, be careful.
Well, talking about safety, is it, is there any requirement from when your business is here and your parking is across the street? Is there any kind of a crosswalk or designated lines in the road supposed to be there to, to help with that? Is there anything?
Bird and crosswalk.
Nothing that I know of, this place, not traditionally speaking, or typically speaking.
But I mean, it would be easy for us to, you know, add that, we don't have any room for landscaping. Um, we need to maintain our separation distances for loading and whatnot per the code. I mean, we do have existing screening trees that are there, we could add the privacy slats all the way around, which would certainly block the view of the vehicles, would prevent us from violating a portion of the code, and solves the problem of not having enough room for, for planters.
Is the fence intact all the way around?
If it's not, we'll repair it where it needs to be, yeah.
You know. The fence is intact.
Yeah, if it's broken, it's.
You know, Mike, I'm always, you know, aware of cost, okay? The fence is old. You're gonna put slot, slats through the fence, I don't know if the slats maybe can fit through those, the old offenses. Okay, but wouldn't it be better just to put a brand new six foot fence with the green slats or something like that? I'm sorry?
I, I don't think I can do that on Frontier's property, that's not a problem, or a lease. So.
Oh, okay.
I think I stand a chance with Frontier, I'm asking them, can we put some privacy slats in?
Yeah.
Cause they can just weed in and out of holes.
I see what you're saying, so. That is not their pri, that is not part of the applicant's property, that's the leased land.
Well, if I own the land, I'd let you do it.
Would I rent a fence?
Yeah.
No, I mean, what would the board like to see here, because I don't know that we, we, look, we thought about renting fences. I don't know that I can approach Frontier for it. That has been a parking lot for decades, that has not been screened. We are proposing something that makes the conditions certainly better to the village.
I think the suggestion would be, I think, uh, I think it would be helpful to have the screening along the property, so you're screening residential property. Yeah, Elizabeth mentioned that the, the code calls for some buffering to, for residential property. I almost think that it would be better to leave along Elm Street somewhat open, so for security purposes. It's not like, you know, you're boxing the property into the, an evergreen slat.
Well, it's already across the front, you can't see from Elm Street, you can't see through that fence.
And that's, you know, I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, that's already, that, that part, so if you look at this, it's perfectly, you know, it's a rectangle, the left side of the rectangle, which is now that vehicle that's out there, I can't tell, the truck, it looks like a Frontier truck.
Nope.
It goes, the fence would go kinda right through that.
Right.
At this point, and there's a fence in the front that's brand new. On the right side, going all the way back, and in the back, that's what we're talking about, that's not new, that's a four foot fence with no privacy at all.
Right.
Currently, that's what's there. So they're talking about adding what they put in the new sections, to the other sections.
But I think if they were saying, if I understood you correctly, um, the privacy slats along Elm Street actually prevent the view of the parking lot from criminal activity.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able unless you drove into it to see, I mean, the, you know, there was an opening, I think, on the left there. That's the back, I was over there the other day, um.
I think it's better to be able to see the parking lot of the road, if they see the parking lot on the adjacent residential.
Right, right, yeah.
I, I agree.
So in other words, remove the privacy slats just along the frontage.
Yeah, I hear, right.
Right.
And leave the privacy slats on the other three sides.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, because I do think security is.
Are there, is there lighting in those parking lots?
I, that, that was another question, what, you know, what is the existing lighting?
Is there a pole in the centers?
Is that on the plan, Mike? The lighting?
I believe the, um, showing utility poles, I don't know if it's actually loaded or such.
I gotta move.
Because with employees and so forth, I think, you know.
What do we decide, page two or page three?
Dave, did you review the lighting at all?
I don't think there was lighting in the site, the existing pole, I mean, honestly, I think there is, yeah.
It looks like there's one in the center of the parking lot.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Again, the old school metal. So, that parking lot is lit.
You're not listening to me.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
No, 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 not you.
Talking to the computer.
The computer that, you know, when you scroll and it just keeps going and you've already.
Actually, there's the symbol right there, you see that little, that's, that shows that there's a little light on.
So there's one, you, what you're saying, if I'm hearing you right, Mike, is there's one lighting pole?
I think there's another one in the back.
Let's see if this doesn't scroll past.
So I don't know how that could be sufficient.
There's another pole there. There's another pole there that shows existing lighting. There's another pole here, existing lighting, so I think that parking lot.
That's a pole?
Got it, yeah.
So there's.
Four?
Four.
Yeah, four.
Yep.
Oh, you can point it.
Right now, what it's been, this was, guys are working here, they're done with their jobs, and, fines are out of there, you know what I mean?
Was there on overtime?
Four lights, right? Four, four lights?
And those are the old metal headlights, those things.
Better than, yeah.
They project a ton of light. Um, they were LED, I tell you, they were.
Yeah, right.
Those project. So Mike, you're in, that the board would like us to remove the privacy slats along the front of Elm Street, and install them on the other two parking lots?
I mean, I would think that would be.
Yeah, I think, I think we all agree.
A better situation on that.
Yes.
That's fine.
But I am concerned about the lighting, Mike, and I, I, I mean, I've gotta go over there and go at nighttime. Um, and the only reason I'm saying that, with all the offices you're putting in, and, you know, potentially, you, you know, you're gonna have a number of people walking back and forth across that lot, and, you know, crossing streets and so forth. I don't think the street's an issue there, but I think the, um, and again, the surface, it looked pretty rough on the surface, and if you got people that are coming back and forth to office type work, to me, that surface is gonna matter.
Well, there's four lights, right, four lights, you said?
Right.
Have to even work it.
Right. What kind of lighting it is.
Right.
Let's take a look at the stretch.
Okay.
And when we get out of here, saying we'll all drive by.
That's right. I know, I try to get all that stuff in during the day, going and looking at things, but.
Is it strictly gonna be like, early in the morning till about five or six o'clock, you're not expecting to go late into the day?
The plan to have is employees in school, with what they're doing, have work over there, so I guess five, six o'clock, everybody's.
Okay, yeah, you're shutting down a regular, regular, you know, nighttime hours or anything like that.
Yeah, but you're not, they're not make, we're not making that a condition, unless you wanna make it a condition, you know what I mean?
No, I just, right.
Because if you're, if it's not a condition, you know, an owner can say, hey, we got offices here, and people can work till nine o'clock, let's say. Whatever, you can do that, so if you do, you wanna make sure they're safe going back and.
The lighting and.
Right, that's, that's.
And the surface, that's very true.
Yeah, so, because the, the surface right now, from what I saw, is pretty, pretty rugged.
You beat up.
Hey, good. You have a chair, you have a special?
I think we have two more comments to review. Uh, number eight, cover liner provided by the design professional indicates that the applicant currently uses and has been using oil dry cleaner kit for oil spills within the building, and that all vehicular work has been and will continue to be performed within the building. The note should be added to the plans to so indicate. Additionally, applicant shall explain how any leaking fuels and oils damage vehicles and lots to be.
So, um, we can certainly add, um, that note to the plan, or whatever the body might want to write, if they will. Um, and again, as we discussed before, vehicles are inspected, like, as they're brought in, if there's a leaking vehicle, it doesn't go in the parking lot, it goes into the garage for whatever repairs are necessary, and then. it doesn't go in the parking lot. It goes into the garage for whatever repairs are necessary, and then would be stored potentially outside. I can place that note on the plans as well, if that makes the board feel more comfortable about how we, the procedures of handling.
So, let me ask, are, are cars towed there? Right, is that, cars get towed?
Of course, yeah, whether flat, better...
And you tell me the mechanics inside stop their work, go out, and a vehicle, tow truck drivers just bring a vehicle in, park it. They, they stop what they're doing, go out, and then do a whole assessment on the...
Well, they're looking for leaking vehicles in the car. So, if there's oil, I mean, and gasoline, you don't even want that. You, you wanna pick that up quickly, right? You don't want leaking gasoline where we could end up with, you know, some type of an explosion. So, those things are, they, they inspect them as they come in. If there's enough leaking oil and gasoline, it's dealt with before the car's stored with on the site. If there's, for some reason, I mean, if that's the operating procedure, they don't necessarily need to check the cars that are already in the site. They've been checked.
Right, I'm talking about like the vehicle, vehicles being towed in.
Yeah, vehicles towed in, they take a look at it. They'll take a look at it before it's parked in the actual site. If there's any leaking gasoline, oil, antifreeze, any other type of fluids, it's dealt with before it's stored on the site. And we can memorialize that on the plans.
And is there a particular area they get, in that lot, 'cause that's a big lot. So, is there any area they get particularly dropped at, like tow trucks?
Yeah, I, I think whatever's the open area within that, that parking area that they can...
Right.
Yeah, so it's probably as soon as they're coming in, probably within that front engine's rough, I would imagine. That's where it occurs predominantly. If there's something wrong, it's unloaded and put right in the garage.
I mean, I've worked in a lot of areas, and I've worked with a number of mechanics. My dad was a mechanic. They didn't check things as they're coming in. They just didn't do that. It's not, wasn't part of what they do.
Put it over there.
So, I'm pretty, I'd be pretty surprised if I sit over there and watch and see if, if that's what happens. I, I, I'd be surprised if that, if that actually takes place.
The, I mean, if something gets stored on the site that's not checked, and there's a leak, then they're responsible for checking those vehicles, and they'll use the same oil-dry absorbent to try to deal with the situation on that spot. If that's something else this board wants me to expand upon on the plans, I'm glad to do that as well.
Is that what, um, there, Mike, where the buildings are? I guess that's twenty-three and twenty-five, one twenty-three, twenty-five?
Correct.
Is that, I can't remember. Is that paid?
Um, yeah, that parking lot is paid, yes.
Is saved there? I couldn't see it. There's cars there.
And then, last line, the applicant has provided the exchange part three EAF to address the item reviewed by the planning board and identify them in part two EAF as moderate to large impacts. The planning board should consider the response and to make a determination of significance pursuant.
Yep.
Okay, um, I'm gonna focus, and I have not finalized my memos, um, because I got them on Friday. So, I will finalize the memo based on this conversation and circulate it after the meeting. All right. So, what I've added is the applicant has provided a parking license for the use of the parking lot located across the street. License term is for ten years through twenty thirty-four, with a renewal option of an additional five-year term. The site plan should incorporate a condition that in the event the lease is not renewed, his site plan expires. Because the site plan does rely on those parking spaces, and without those parking spaces, the site plan doesn't work. The licensed parking, um, area should be for parking of staff vehicles, only not vehicles under repair, and that should be listed as a condition. The agreement calls for the installation of the fence separating the licensed parking area from the rest of the property. The fence is shown on the site plan. We just had a lengthy discussion about part of that fence. And it looks like it's already been installed. The license agreement provides that the licensor has the right to terminate the parking license in its sole discretion upon ninety days' notice. Such notice of termination should be provided to the village. I'd like to see the lease updated to reflect that. So, right now, the way I read the lease is that if Frontier decides it uses parking lot back on ninety days' notice, it can request its parking lot back. And then we have a parking issue. So, that's my biggest concern with how the lease is, is drafted. It, putting the shoe on the other foot is, you know, as an attorney that represents private parties, it's a very traditional parking lease. You know, nothing jumps up and screams at me, but because if the two, the site plan hinges on this lease, we need to make sure that appropriate terms and conditions are listed in the approval, should that lease, should that lease fall through.
Do you have those conditions?
What do, uh, one that the village be listed as a noted, that the lease provides that the village gets notice of any termination. And then, if it, if they're, if the property owner lets the, doesn't renew the lease, or the lease, you know, defaults under the lease, and they exercise their right to terminate it, effectively, the, the condition I see is revoking the, revoking the certificate of occupancy, unless alternative parking can be established.
Well, now, just the thing that Frontier's gonna be taken over by Verizon now, who will...
I can't speak to, I can't speak to that. I, I, I can't.
Because their lease, would that be, would Verizon come back and say, we don't like this lease? I, I'm, I'm just concerned about you getting a lease.
Frontier can, Frontier can go back and say that, if they want to.
I, I mentioned the same thing about the ninety days, and they are coming back. It's a standard. They don't need a parking. They're not using the parking. It's not going to happen, but I understand your concerns.
I understand that.
And I can ask them to add that note.
Six years from now, and all of a sudden, they're like, oh, we want, we want that spot, or...
I wanna put a towel roll.
We go through the same thing with shared, like, refuse, things like that. You know, you can use our stuff over here. We were, we went through that one. You know, and it's...
If I just have one comment, your comment, I don't know if the site plan should expire as opposed to, like, maybe offices cannot be utilized. We would, whatever parking we would have, it's utilizing. I would still like that it be, like, counted towards the site plan itself.
So, here's what I'm gonna ask you to do. Figure out how much office space, twenty-five spaces gets you, and what, what part of the building we can ex, what, the, the problem, my, my biggest issue is, once it's built, it's built, right?
Right, can't take that away.
And, you know, whether it's this owner or another owner, if it's there, they'll use it. So, how do you, how do you prevent, how do you physically prevent somebody from using a space?
I can, I can look at that calculation, see what that provides us in terms of office space, because remember, we're parking next door as well.
The other thought that just popped into my head, and Dave, chime in if you think I'm crazy. Where, where the car storage is currently, see how many spaces you can bank.
And then they'd lose their storage if they lost...
You'd have to, so, I'm thinking quasi, like, bank parking. See how many spots you can get in there. Inside on your, the site you control, and if you lose that...
That's your contingency.
That's my contingency, is I have bank parking. Something, let me, let's see where that goes.
I'll look at the twenty-five spaces, what that counts towards in terms of office spaces.
Right.
And then we'll look at inside our vehicle storage area, potentially what else we can fit there. Is that what you're saying?
But you don't, the, the plan is to show that, like, just like banks, like, bank parking, we're not gonna develop them.
Yes, I know, I understand the purpose of this, it's for the internal use of site.
And then the property owner, if that situation were to ever come to fruition, the property owner gets to decide which is more important, redoes the approval for a less intensive parking use, and keeps the automotive, or reduces the automotive scale, and the owner can then make a decision which one's more important to their business model.
And Mike, this isn't just for, or is it? For the office employees, you're talking about all the employees?
Are gonna use a lot of personal...
Well, that calculation, so, there are some spots provided onsite. Not a lot, but there are some...
But are they going away with the new addition?
They're, they're on the other side of the building.
Now, we have parking shut in front of our building, and in the existing lot of one twenty-three, you guys made us stripe it out. So, we can show exactly how many parking spaces to fit there.
Because you also, I think you have a couple more spots than you need.
Yeah, we might actually have more parking.
You have, you have six more spaces than you need. So, I don't need you to necessarily bank twenty-five. So, if you've got twenty-five, that means you've got seven, uh, you've got twenty-five across the street. That means you have nine onsite, and I, I'm not counting. So, then you only need to bank the difference. You don't have to, you don't have to, does that make sense?
Go to the parking garage.
All right, now that we've answered that, and then landscaping plan, planning board to review and evaluate landscaping plan for conformity.
I'm gonna put my pitch in for the landscaping. That was better than I thought we were gonna get, but I'll leave it up to you guys. I thought that was actually fairly creative from the landscape architect to take the island next to the parking space and to put something in along the frontage. They made the most out of the little amount of area that we had.
You're talking about the cross-street, Mike?
No, no, the landscaping, um, for the proposed building.
It's the last sheet, right?
It's the last sheet. I thought we were only gonna be able to get planters in, but they were able to...
That, come on. Sorry, this is not my computer, and it does not like...
Yeah, yeah, next time.
Laser, red laser.
Yeah, right, laser, laser.
I, I've actually made that mistake before at one of these those...
You couldn't, you couldn't see the, you couldn't see the red dot?
I put the laser pointer up on the screen. I said, I know, but...
Well, okay, timeout. Mine does great, 'cause I can be, scroll with my finger.
So, anyways, we're able to squeeze some landscaping in over here. At least we're able to frame the building up on it.
One of the other plan sheets, you also show the existing trees behind...
In the rear, yeah. We do have a good row of existing trees behind the property, too.
What's that front showing, Mike, on Elm Street?
What are you planting, Tim?
Yeah.
Uh, so if you scroll up just a little bit, the table will be right above it. Um, that's some type of a label, I believe, that's in the middle.
Might say to the right, right to the right there, that say the green fence.
And, uh, you have to go, you have to go up to the table, telling you to wait to hide about that.
No, the table's right here.
Yeah, dude.
That's a symbol legend.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The painting table is above, it's like, so we got eastern red buds, one eastern red bud tree that's right there.
And then we're framed by some, trying to read here, some, some rolo sunax, and some Japanese ponies. And what are they gonna be put in? That's gonna actually be a curb ladder. So, you're gonna have a curb ladder.
Yep.
It's got soil in the middle of the lodge. The plate is official, it's official sign. And keep it, keep in mind, I went through this landscape architect, making sure that I can get cars in and out. So, I had to turn and gather, and make sure what, like, space I have that's realistically usable. That's pretty creative, right?
Is there a place for, is there a place for snow removal?
You know, on this site, it would probably be, probably towards the back. I mean, I'd have to ask how they current...
Pick up spaces or something like that?
Yeah, they'd lose spaces where they're parking, uh, storage vehicles. They'd lose parking spaces. They'd push it up against the back of the building, lose the drive aisle behind the building. I'm sure that's what they're doing right now.
Mike, Mike, is, in front of the area that's got, um, this car storage here, I'll just come here. Not my computer. What?
It's winter.
It's not. Uh, is there a cur, is there curbing along?
We're proposing it now.
They're proposing it now, but otherwise, it just bleeds into the street?
Yeah, right now, it's open. There's no curb there. The whole frontage is open.
Yeah, so that's the view I'm looking, 'cause when you come down there, that whole front is wide open, and all you see is cars, 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 cars. You know what I mean? So, she didn't put anything on that plan to...
We don't really have room there. If, that's, that's the issue that we have. Well, I mean, if we can bring the site plan back up and take a closer look at it.
Not having room for the applicant's side is not an issue for us. You know what I mean? It's much more the community we're thinking about, looking at that.
I mean, the only thing I could potentially propose there is, if you think of another, another fence over there, is privacy slats. Along, just along the front of the curb, and we can put it on the inside of the curb, and we can block some of the view of the car. I don't have room. If I put a ten-foot planting iron on there, you don't have, you know, most of this. I just, the, the whole point of doing all this, to try to get more space, to process what's onsite more quickly, both ways.
Well, I don't know if you have, you don't have an auto business, you know?
Not, we're gonna have one that's got more capacity than we can store cars in the parking lot, though. The whole point is we're trying to expand the building to process the cars that are in the parking lot. As opposed to build a bigger building that's gonna have, right, more space, and I can put cars in the parking lot.
I totally understand that, and what we have to weigh that against is the community that lives there, and what they're seeing with the more cars and more building.
And, and which is why I'm suggesting maybe we can put up some type of privacy fencing in that location as well. I mean, that provides screening, and doesn't impact the applicant's business for, it's here for us to try to process it more efficiently. If you don't like privacy slats in that location, maybe we could look at a more decorative fence. Maybe we could do a vinyl fence there, but...
How close would that be to the street?
It's gonna be on the other side of the curb. It's gonna be close.
Yeah, and then, now, when you think about snow removal, it's just gonna destroy that fence right there. It's, it's gonna, yeah. If you put a fence there, it's gonna be more of a hindrance than I think.
It's a good point. We're against landscaping for there, 'cause it'll just destroy...
Yeah, and anything, you, I, I think the curb is probably the best, well, means of control to have.
That's control for the vehicles or for the plant, but doesn't screen the property. And so, if you live across the street from it, you know, or just down a ways, that's what we're talking about, you know?
I get it, but I mean, like, if you're, if you're buying a house next to a cemetery, you're, you're, you're buying a house next to a cemetery. If you're buying a house next to a, an auto body shop, you're buying a house next to an auto body shop.
What you would expect if you did buy the house is for the planning board to say, what are you gonna do here? Because you're expanding. You know what I mean? That's, that's...
I get it, but like, it's that, you know, like, yeah, in the beginning, it's gonna look great, but then the winter hits.
It's a good point he raises.
Yeah, well, oh, I understand that. I understand it. It, it would, you know...
The fence wouldn't last very long.
No, unless you set it back, and your argument would be that then we'd lose some parking, you know what I mean? And, and then our role is, how do you weigh that out? Because that's, you know?
So, how long is this, and, and I'm not asking this question like as a smart-ass kind of question, but how long has this been in operation as an automotive business? And what are the residences that we're looking to screen it from? Can we go back on?
Yeah, sure.
They're right across the street.
And now that...
That's a spot, it's residence.
That's fine.
Now that it's a one-way, Mike, you gotta come past there to see it all. Everybody lives on that street.
Oh, is this how one went?
Yeah.
So, that runs, yeah, right there.
That is in, what, this one also?
Oh, yeah, right across the street. Is there one there?
Well, yeah, there's residents along that street there.
Corner there, yeah, the bend.
Just, it's been in operation as such for a very long time.
I know. Well, you know, it's like anything else, right? For, for instance, and here's the role that we have, and I know you can appreciate it for what you do. But anytime you make a change to something, nobody can make you make the change until you need to make a change. Then when it comes before the board, that's when we'd say, okay, then let's upgrade this. So, for instance, with the, with the veterinarian clinic, they didn't have a whole bunch of things taped. Well, if you're gonna do this, you want this addition, you're gonna pave all of that, right?
But I, in my experience, it's also a planning board's responsibility to mitigate to the best extent that they can. And I think in this case, we're giving you the best that we can on a site that's really difficult. We have mitigated. We have provided landscaping that was never there. I mean, to, to request something that impacts the functionality of the business, that becomes... I mean, to, to request something that impacts the functionality of the business, that becomes a difficult request.
Jeff?
What's, I'm sorry.
What size fence are you thinking, like, four?
Well, if you're within, it has to be lower, it can't be higher.
Four or less.
I have to double check the...
And how much is that gonna help?
I mean, you can't just stop a fence from front of approximately twelve.
I mean, if it's less than four feet.
Joe, that was gonna say?
No, it would be four feet.
Someone that lives there, they, they take care of their property, the hedges.
Up to four feet, in the front, that's it.
You expect it across the street as well.
Yeah, four-to-five fence.
Yes, of course, wait, we're in it. I, I have to check the zone.
See how well it's maintained.
You should see my hedge, it's the same one.
Yeah, that's the, um, that people are in, right?
What, this site? This, this site is...
Well, you know, also, like they were saying here, see how, see how the resident has taken care of their property. See how they, they make sure that they, we want it, we want it to go along with the neighborhood, we just want it to match the neighborhood.
I've done nothing with this board but try to accommodate every request, and this applicant's been great, and will continue to try to do so. I only oblige on what I have within my power and area of use to do so.
Yeah, I get it.
So on this one, it just don't quite have much I can tell you that I can do with this agenda here, but we have provided some... I thought we, I thought we provided a better landscaping plan than even I thought we were gonna be able to provide. I thought we were gonna come here with some boxes and some planters and, and figure out, you know, how to, how to make that work with a good one step back.
You know, by any chance, if that trailer and that, like, that white vehicle across, is that part of your property as well, or that's kind of s...
Is that a storage?
You know, you know, I'm not sure, okay.
I mean, from that photo, I...
It doesn't look like, I'm just curious, you know?
I think that is part of that property.
Is it?
Yeah, because I think that property from, remember, goes right to the, to the bend.
There's a fence, hold on.
What could be done, the vinyl that comes out, so, you know, I, you're right, it is, but it is.
Yeah, that's part of it.
That's part of it, at least part of it.
So could something come right with that, where the pavement meets the shrubbery on the left, maybe a vinyl, I don't mean, I don't know. You just try to do something through the...
I just, the problem is, we put it right up against the curb, and I keep...
Well, no, I, I agree with him, I wouldn't put it, I wouldn't put it up against the road either on Elm Street, I can use it, it'd get destroyed, 100%.
And I think too, the, you know, obviously, when you can see the grass growing up through the tires. It means the car hasn't...
Be better a little bit longer.
The car hasn't moved.
Forty-eight hours.
Long time.
Here comes the other thing, we talked about on this side of the street, do we wanna block that front, because now people can go behind there, there's, there's no visibility to the parking lot, even from this standpoint. I don't want anybody's taking any cars that are in disrepair, but it's still probably not very good to screen through the road.
Yeah, they steal airbags and car, car, catalytic converters.
And now we're screening the road again from this side.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't screen the road, I don't think, but... It's like, I guess, that's the only...
A retractable fence, just build it into the ground.
That's very different from that now.
Is it full of nerves now?
Just a retractable, build it into the ground.
Well, that looks like it's, it's gravel, that looks, that looks like it's cinders, it doesn't look like pavement.
Right, I don't think it is, but in my head, it would be, but here's how it is.
That's gravel right there?
Yeah, it looks like, yeah, right.
Is that all gravel right there?
It looks like cinder, you know, that...
And the wood.
Yeah.
But this picture, guys, this picture is dated 2017.
Yeah, it's, it's older, but I don't know if they...
So it's a seven-year-old picture.
Well, I mean, would you assume they did? I wouldn't, but I should, maybe they did, I don't know.
Mike, did you, yeah. We were just talking about possibly, you know, maybe having, uh, some, I don't know, planters or a hedge or something just off the curb, and maybe not the full width of, of the full length of the road there.
Right, let it break, to break it up, yeah. Yeah, I had more of a thought like that, too, I don't, I don't like the idea of a fence, you know, I don't like that, but it's, like, no. This is 2017 picture, so it's not exactly like that, has this been paved since then?
Oh, yeah, this is big.
Right.
This is 2017.
Yeah, this is older.
You're getting the short end of an old picture, sorry. You have to pull up Google Maps.
Again, something we can look at, we could put some grasses, but it's gonna be up against that curb, and again, when they plow in the wintertime, with the roads salts, those plantings are not gonna last, I don't see them lasting more than six months.
No, it'd have, right.
It'd have to be raised.
Continually.
Yeah.
And now I raise them too much, and now I'm breaking... So, yeah. Those ornamental grasses are pretty hard, I mean, they probably, yes, just from a couple of feet off the, on the curb. Should probably survive, I mean, you can talk to Karen about that, and they, they grow pretty tall, and you usually just cut them down, you know, in the winter, they come back up, they're six, seventeen.
There's nothing there.
No, no, they're, they're suggesting.
Some of them are.
Mike, what was it, oh, sorry.
I don't know, you can usually, you can cut it like three feet or something, and then they keep coming back up.
Yeah, they'll grow, they're harding, I have those too, they're, they're harding.
But then you have that, then you see everything in the wintertime, so they, you only have a blockage during the spring and summer, so that doesn't make sense.
If you don't typically cut those all the way down flush with the ground, you're still usually probably, I'd say, three feet or...
Two feet, I cut, I cut mine about two feet.
I cut mine down to four feet.
You could do a glory, but the more...
Some of them are really big.
If you let them grow, they grow larger.
Well, what I'm saying is, it's only a partial, it's only a partial solution, you'll, you'll see it, you know, during the winter.
Well, you'll still see the, the ones that are cut, you'll see them, you know what I mean, so the...
Well, you'll see, you'll see everything parked, in the wintertime, you'll see, once those...
Well, I don't think you'll ever block the parking totally, I don't think you can do that.
With a fence you can.
Yeah.
With a fence you can.
What's the, what's the curb made of that you're intending?
Concrete.
Just a concrete port?
That would make it, that would make it destroyed.
I mean, we're putting the curb on property, but it's right up against the edge of being, that curb is suspicious, or, or... What I might actually see, um... We want a whole curb out. Then is it perfect, then they can move the curb?
The concern without the curb is that it'll become one long open driveway, and I think there's actually a code provision in our street specs. I have to double...
But if you don't have the curb and a fence, you don't have a long, dark driveway, if you have no curb and fence, you don't have that long, open driveway.
Yeah, see if there's something else they can think of and...
If we can, if we can break up a small portion...
Yeah, something breaking it up would be...
The vehicular storage area, right? I'll see if I can get her to come up with something that she thinks will...
I think that might be, yeah, I think that's kinda what I'm thinking too.
Maybe like a partial, maybe it's, I don't know how deep, how wide it is, but I'll work with her to figure out, so...
All right, no, that sounds fair.
So, um, Mike, just be aware, because it's timing next month, unless there's more to discuss, submission date is the 28th, we have a combined workshop regular meeting.
One meeting in November.
One meeting, so that...
So it'd be a special meeting where we do business and workshops, so...
So, um, because 14th is, uh, that's, is, um... Um, eleven, it is eleven, sorry, 14th is this month's holiday, the 11th is perfection day, so the 26th, 26th would be our meeting.
Uh, I'm sorry, and that's, uh...
November.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-eighth of October is the submission date.
Yeah, spoke of the actual...
When the meeting...
It's gonna be the 26th.
Of November.
Can we just check the calendar on that, was that after Thanksgiving?
No.
No.
It's a week out next year.
Yes.
Twenty-sixth, November?
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah. Special meeting, probably.
Okay, um, any other items on this particular?
Two days.
No, I won't get you, and I'm sorry, I just, not enough hours in the day, so I will finalize the memo and I'll email it to you.
Okay, so we'll take a look at the, if you guys have any comments, it's a good point, you have any comments on your architectural plans?
How much on what?
The architectural.
Hold on, I'll pull those up. That one, right? Yes.
That's the rendering.
That's the rendering.
Nice, there's no cars there.
It's pretty straightforward, there's nothing...
Yeah, the, yeah.
How many bays?
Like, two bays?
No, just at the end, see, there's a great bay.
There's one bay at the end, there's two bays in the front.
This is the, this is the existing half, see, existing proposed, and then one big bay.
And that open one will go all the way, you can pull all the way down through.
This one?
Yeah.
Off the other side?
Well, if you look at the floor plan, it'll tell us for sure.
Oh, okay, yeah. No, not that side, this stairs there.
So that's, that's the door, it's all on the left end, so if needed, it could go all the way through to the other side of the door.
Right. How are the bays in there, right, how are they gonna be when it's done, where the mechanics are working?
I, I mean, it's just an open area, they place their toolboxes and wherever else that they need to normally.
They don't have lifts or anything?
They do, but I mean, I don't know that I'm diagramming that out for the planning board. For actual purposes, but for planning for actual building permit, yeah, we'll probably show that.
Like forty-five degrees when they walk right in, right, so...
So go to the outside, please.
Back, oh, so there's a garage.
Pretty sure, it'd be an improvement over what's there now, for sure.
Well, what, what's, what's deciding, what's the answer?
Aluminum?
Is it just, it's not a metal?
Yeah, I mean, we're just showing a standard kinda like block face, uh, for the building on the bottom portion, uh, the upper portion will probably be some type of stucco of some sort.
Um, we don't need it for the ned debt, but we will eventually need, um, a materials listing.
Yeah.
For final approval.
And again, Mike, there's no 3D effect there at all, right, just all flat, right?
Or is there any protruding forward?
Right.
Um, I don't believe so, I think the only thing might be...
Right here.
Yeah, this stuff right here, but not much. This is not a ginormous building, and it needs to be really broken up in terms of its depth either.
No, it's just the, the idea that it's like a residential area, that's all.
We gave it a peaked roof with shingles. Which, you know, gives it, uh, certainly, we've got double-hung windows, so it's giving it some kind of... While still making sure that's, you know, a garage, right?
Is there gonna be any signage or anything like that, or is it not a building?
The only, the only thing we've shown so far is what you can see there with upstate collision, um, that's not guaranteed they wanna put it up, but I made them put it on the plan for now, so we don't have to come back.
Just beyond the building, right?
It'd be on the building, correct, right, where it's shown right there.
No independent sign.
No external independent sign.
No freestanding.
Is it auto body or mechanics? You said it's collision, so that's more of an auto body shop than a mechanic.
I've been, I've been using that terminology interchangeably, um, I presume they do, they do mostly auto body, I'm sure they do some basic mechanic work within the building as well.
Okay, but they're...
I don't think they do transmissions and things of that nature, but they'll do basic, probably, engine work, like most auto body shops can.
And they're doing body work.
Body work, though, yes, for sure.
Is there a paint booth in there?
I believe there is.
Yeah, so you'll have an aerial? There'll be, have to be air, uh, filtration then?
They'll have to meet all those requirements when they submit for a building permit.
Okay, all right.
All that will be dealt with on those architectural...
Fortunately, we don't have to deal with that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
We can, we should mention that, it is, the paint and the smell are pretty heavily regulated, but from a secret perspective, you should just, the applicant must, you know, provide suitable, um, ventilation, um, to mitigate, um, 'cause I can tell you, I can smell it with auto body from my office.
They don't get any exhaust, there's no exhaust fans on that building, but I can see that they're, you know, exhausting anything out.
So they do, so we, um, we need to make sure that there's no...
Right, for seeker.
For seeker.
Right there. Any other questions from board?
I'm good. Unfortunately, I think I have one word to talk about, which is chocolate cheese.
Chocolate cheese?
Chocolate cheese.
Chocolate cheese.
Did we at least took us to a meeting?
I don't know, we did.
Yes, we did.
We did? Yeah, we planned it that way.
Mechanic to Baker.
All right, so that's it for that one, and, um, so next up is, uh, site plan for you, review for 562 Route 17, Choco Cheese. And so, Dave?
Okay, uh, so again, a reminder of the project, it's a new site plan, so fifty-three foot, ten inch by thirty-five foot building addition that is to be used for cold storage for the existing first-floor bakery. Property consists of approximately one acre of land located within the G B district with access near State Road 17. We have the following comments on the plans provided. Number one, it's indicated that the new termination letter provided by the village inspector, Fox, for the purpose of the neighborhood shopping center and existing, to be reviewed. Number two, based upon a review of the submitted short D I F, the application may be considered a temporary action, it is exempt from further secret review. Number three, the plan is subject to review by the county department claim under G M L 239, and a response letter has been provided. County department claim has indicated that a variance may be needed due to an increase in the degree of non-conformity for the side door. Prior determination has been made by the village's building inspector, that a variance is not needed for the proposed addition, as the total required side door would be eight feet with one side meeting the minimum fifty feet, and the cycle had eighty-five feet on one side and exceed the total of eight. Number four, plans were referred to fire departments for review and comment as outlined in a email provided by Nick Gordon, second assistant chief of the Monroe Joint Fire District. It was determined that proposed addition will not affect their response or apparatus placement, and there were no issues with the addition. And number five, signage has been provided on the architectural plans, properties located within signage district number three, where the maximum permitted area of sign for each linear foot of building facing the street is two square feet of sign from the linear foot of ten space in the building, and the maximum vertical dimension is not to exceed twenty-five percent of the total height of the building. Proposed signage appears to meet these requirements, signage shall be subject to review approval by the village's building.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe we had addressed, I think, most of the site plan, really, the comments, if not all of them, so...
I don't have, um, anything new beyond what Davis has, has already said. Um, I did start to pull together, um, a preliminary discussion tonight, so that I could finalize it and have it, um, act on it at our regular meeting on the 22nd. Um, this isn't, I'm not gonna go through all the application materials we have, but you guys, you know, my customary form is to list all the documents we've reviewed. Um, it is a type-two action, um, it's a commercial space less than four thousand feet, uh, square feet. So our customary conditions, planning board chair is hereby authorized to sign the site plan after the following has occurred, um, and I would certainly, uh, reference, uh, Dave Hagan's memo, that was customary, so, the memo, today's Dave. Applicant to pay all fees, um, confirmation by the village engineer and planning board attorney that the final site plan conforms to the terms of this approval resolution. Applicant to maintain signage indicating trucks over, and Mike, you're gonna remind me how big we can go?
Yeah, um...
I'll double-check my notes.
Yep.
I was trying to do this relatively.
Dave, would you be able to W P forty, put cover?
Well, dude, you had a sign on the plan, right? Enter, say, tractor trailer.
I just, at some point, I needed to mention.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is no tractor trailer, you're not permitted to sign. Hey, would, would the board prefer that, so there's no tractor trailer, something that sets maximum weight?
Well, I think there's just a little bit of an added resolution, right?
I just. I, I, I thought that the issue was the length.
The issue is the length.
Yeah.
Right.
Not just tractor trailers to fit.
Okay.
And if it's smaller, it's too big.
Okay.
Yeah, box truck is fine, yeah. They're gonna get deliveries, they have to be able to do that, I think.
You gotta get your Amazon UPS trucks to go.
Trucks are what, about twenty feet?
Twenty-five, whatever, yeah, that's, it beats fifty-three, yeah.
Okay. I am not a truck.
No, we don't, we don't wanna see eighteen.
They got traffic.
Eighteen wheelers coming across, trying to back in, stopping traffic.
Alright.
And we see that, we see that all the time.
Yeah.
Failure to restrict such traffic may result in a violation of site plan and revocation of the certificate of occupancy, and I just wanna be clear, cause we've had this situation, it's happened with one of my other municipalities. Property owners agreed to a restriction on, and, and it wasn't necessarily for size of trucks, it was noise and timing of deliveries, cause they had joined a residential. They said, okay, these are our hours of operation, their truck drivers violated it. Um, the property owner and the applicant, they are responsible for the trucks coming in and off of their site, so if there's a violation, yes, the truck driver may have, um, V T L issues, but the property owner is also gonna have issues, so what I don't wanna hear is if, if there is a violation. I'm just the owner, I'm not in control, it's your site, you're in control, okay? And I'll make, I'll make that clear, um, on the resolution. I'm gonna literally copy and paste, um, Dave's number five for respect to the discussion of signage. Uh, I don't know that it, it needs much more than that. Um, I have here, insert discussion on landscaping, um. So I don't know, the applicant did provide some landscaping on, on the site, other than, you know, my infamous landscaping to be maintained perpetually, I think that's where.
That's it, that's it.
Um, and then, architectural review, you did provide, um, sample colors which would be incorporated into the approval.
Potentially. And then, the canopy, Mike, what are the dimensions on that? Coming off there?
That's, that's wrong build.
But it'll be on all of them going down.
Can we look the same thing in the show?
Yep, 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 yep.
Hold on, let me slide.
One second.
Trying to take Mike's.
Mike, the eyebrow is gonna be the whole length of the building.
Let's, let's bring it up.
Yeah, we'll bring it up. Takes a little longer, cause they're not using a Mac.
You know, and I just, you know, you expect me to take notes, Andy Vanoway, it's a little hard to.
You are wearing two hats today, you are.
Right, yeah, exactly.
It's, it's twelve feet by something.
So, okay, now.
You were asked a question.
So, the canopy shown there, what you're calling, what you're calling a canopy.
Or the eyebrows, what you're.
Or the eyebrow, right?
They want it all. Right now, it's only shown on that.
These are doors, these are doors, existing doors, these are doors.
Only in.
Right.
Right, so we took.
So why don't you repeat the canopy over each door?
Yeah, why wouldn't you repeat the canopy all the way down?
Are they doing signage there?
Yeah, that's potentially, yeah, so they showed one sign, cause it'll all be different, so you don't have a sign, it's just what I'm wearing.
At the last meeting, we agreed that it would be from end to end.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that's what we said, yeah.
I'm just, at, at a minimum, it would be.
Yeah.
Right, at a minimum, each, each window, bay.
Or, or one all the way.
It could, it could be one all the way across, Mike, which is what we were talking about last time, or individually.
Alright, so, what we talked about was adding a roof last time, which we did, right? Um, like an overhead roof.
Right.
We had talked about, I thought, trying to dress up these windows, uh, which we kinda had. I think, we're gonna have to refresh my memory of the eyebrows, because I think we put it where we thought it would work the most, which is, um, to the left over there, but I don't think there was any anticipation of adding them anywhere else.
Yeah, so what we talked about was across the building, because of the lack of architectural dimension, it just, right.
Or at a minimum.
Yeah, and you were actually.
I was on board with that.
You were on board, yes. You said, okay, we can do that.
So these doors aren't gonna, I mean, they're there, obviously, for a divisible storefront, I get that, are they, they're not gonna be used by the current occupant?
I don't believe so.
So that's, that's why that's.
That's why it's like that.
Cause it, but I get, like, it looks like.
We only put the eyebrow over, we thought it was gonna be a used entrance.
Right, so what we were talking about last time, so that, I don't remember talking about, you know, that at all.
Which entrance it even was.
Right, or which entrance it was, we were just talking about giving it more of a three-dimensional look, that's all, and so we talked about going right across, um, you know, the whole.
I would take that straight.
Yeah.
Yeah, just straight across.
Or, or at a minimum, four each bay of windows, like, you know, like you said.
It's gonna be a whole lot easier.
I would think so.
Cheeky.
I, I think, I think we found, we found about adding the roof in the middle of the eyebrows. Cause I don't remember we talked about the roof, we talked about the.
I don't think, I remember talking.
I don't remember talking a lot about the roof.
Well, the roof does, yeah, we did, because it just goes straight up and flat.
Right, we just, no, no, we, we did, but it wasn't, we were talking about.
Our, our thought process was.
Dress the top windows up.
Dress the top of the roof as opposed to the eyebrows, we thought it would be a bigger change, we wanted to take a look at it, yeah, more pronounced change.
I mean, it's certainly, it's better than nothing, it's like a star, I mean, if you did both, it would look really good, I think that we would be with that.
I do too, cause that's still just straight, flat across, you know? And, and do it, you're like, what? And doing one, I don't mean one there, but like, instead of doing individual windows, I'm thinking, you know, when I saw the one, I'm thinking, oh, maybe do an individual. Something straight across, which is what we talked about last time.
See, I don't understand why you would do four different, five different sides, if it's just one, if it's one cocoa cheese though, like, why would you?
I, I think, we're, so we discussed. Yeah, thank you, that's what we discussed last meeting, we just added something that was.
Okay.
So if we wanted to put a sign, we could deal directly with the building.
So if they ever decided to.
Break it up.
Break up that space, subject to that breakup not exceeding parking, they could do that.
Right.
You know, we even talked about, and in my notes, well, Tuesday's August twenty-seventh meeting, and I have a note here that Mike agreed.
Uh-oh, my god.
One.
He'll hold you to it, he'll.
One.
Should we take a motion?
The bill, the bill, the building, the building color, you were gonna come back with. And also, the eyebrow from end to end the building on first floor. For additional three D dimension on the building, Mike agreed. I got nothing here, I have nothing here on the roof.
We shot ourselves in the foot by getting in the roof.
I have, I have nothing, being honest, Mike, I have nothing here that we mentioned the roof.
Yeah, we, we liked talking about the roof, though, that's, 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 that's great, too.
Alright.
But you, you agree from a three D perspective, an architectural review, you, I got a note here that you agreed.
So, I think, um, I don't wanna, I, I think, we'll, we'll bestow the same courtesy, if you can, cause, cause our meeting's late, and he won't be here. Get us something, so that we can.
Yeah.
I think that's an architect, taken.
So, just let me provide this.
Yeah, just.
Yeah.
Bring something straight across.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And, and I.
Doesn't require me with that.
Right.
You know, he even.
Drag that one and all the way to the other.
You know, I, I even think we talked about with that eyebrow, at least, when people could pull up the park, if, once they get onto the sidewalk, they're covered from the rain.
Yeah, but how, how much is that coming out?
Roof is so high.
Yeah, the roof wouldn't do that.
So how much is the eyebrow coming out? That's what I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's gonna come out that far.
Couple of feet, right?
Yeah, a couple of feet.
Okay, so I think what they're gonna do, because of the, the minimus, they're gonna get that change to us to look at, and again, same thing, please don't get it to us at five o'clock on the twenty-second. So that we can have that, we can have that discussion, um, and then, um, just going real quickly. I just wanna make sure, too many applications to.
Yeah, one, two, ten. I've been taking them out.
Oh, yeah, I did, I did, I just put me on it.
We have three thirty.
Did we have the addition of landscaping?
Yeah, yeah.
On this one? Okay. So.
Right.
Yeah.
It's, it's all.
So we're not at, no, nothing yet.
And there's grass and runs already, it's long, it's long, it looks good, I think.
Okay.
And it doesn't mean anything more.
Okay. Alright, so this application, the nature of the application doesn't want changes to the existing landscaping, existing landscaping to be maintained. Is everybody comfortable with that, like?
At the grass, I think it should be maintained.
I.
Yeah. Yeah, no.
Uh, we, we'll fix our discussionary architectural review once we have it, um. Usual, if work's not done within a year, the approval expires, are there any other conditions the board wanted to consider? And then I'll include the architectural.
Right.
With the lighting, you guys?
Lighting, it brings, it seems like it's used, and I think, uh, L E D is replaced, and I wanna say three thousand panels.
Okay, so I'll insert a discussion regarding one, um.
Three thousand cases, what most people like nowadays, they don't need to, like, speak for you, they want four thousand, you know, as well, like, three thousand cases to be the warm light, well, less true, so.
Yeah, not too bright.
So it gets the same light.
Yeah.
Mike, I have a dumb question, um, the photo, cause it looks like we took a photo of the existing building and then took it and posed. Shows a fairly old dish, is that actively being used, or is that being removed? And it, it's an old, I just, if you're not using it. Is that being used?
That's for aliens.
I just, I'm saying it for.
Which, there are aliens, so.
I guess we'll find out.
If it's not being removed, it would be lovely, if it's not being used, I would remove it, cause it would make the building look even better. There's nothing worse than an old beat-up.
Satellite.
Satellite, you know?
Yeah.
Crooked, rusted.
Doing work anyway.
Just gotta make sure it's not being used.
I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most likely not, but. So, so I have a discussion, like, with the board chair, um, just to reiterate, we've already had the board discussed before, we're looking for the eyebrows above each. When, in this case, it's gonna be a window, we're not gonna do that in the middle door, we're gonna have.
No.
Can't do that.
Do what to the middle door?
So, that door in the middle, I can't have an eyebrow on top of it.
Why?
Why not?
Right, good.
You go all the way. But you're going all the way across.
But if you just take it straight across.
All the way across.
Yeah, just one.
I think if we did one individual for each.
It's up to you.
And a minimum, I would do that, but I think it would be best the hallway, it might be easier as well.
I think it actually looks better if it's individual, cause you're more broken up, well.
I, I don't disagree with you.
I don't disagree with that either.
But, maybe, but I think either one to look at for us would be kinda like, if it's easy enough.
If we did individual, I would have left the door out, but if you want to include the door, it's only gonna be.
It'll be weird, yeah.
If I was saying. I don't know if that makes.
So, connect the third and the fourth row.
The, the two middle ones go all the way across, I like that idea, if you were to do like individual ones, go from.
From the left of the, left middle of the door.
Three to four.
Right, middle of the door.
Left to right.
Just one across, all three.
Yeah, just one across the two units.
Yeah, all the way, yeah.
Yeah.
They were like uniform. Unless you went the whole way.
And the architect play a little.
Yeah.
Mike, structurally, it'd be a lot easier for you to go straight across the whole building.
Oh, probably cheaper.
But it would look better. Yeah, I like individual.
But I like individual, I do too, yeah.
It would look pretty.
I, I think that'd be better.
It'd be very, like.
Yeah, 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 it would, I would agree.
I think it would look better.
Put some high hats in there.
Yeah, down lighting, sure.
Something, can we take the roof down?
No, your foot's already got a bullet in it.
You don't need a roof.
Alright.
Now you have both covered, it, it would look good, it really would look a lot better.
Yeah, it would good.
So I think you have your homework, um, and then, if you can get that to us quickly, we can discuss it and hopefully finalize this, I'm not making any guarantees at the twenty-second. Otherwise, it'll be at the twenty, November, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, next few times.
Alright, next one. Alright, next up is three thirty stage, I see David. How are you, David?
Good, I think he's in the Mets in the series.
You believe the Mets?
Amazing Mets.
Very surprising, very surprising.
Is there a score? Yankees are playing right now.
I think he got banged up yesterday.
Oh, it's a good one.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't wanna repeat that tonight, we'll just leave that for yesterday. So, um, uh, we're happy to be up here, uh, before the boarding, I hope you have our submission from about ten days ago. Uh, I think that's when we submitted, and, uh, in that submission, we addressed, um, the comments that were outstanding, people lead from Green Plan, and in addition, from Mike and Tully and Elizabeth's comments, we were able to, uh, survey the property, have the wetlands, uh, in this case, not wet, because there was no wetlands on the property, uh, we had the floodplain, uh, addressed, and, uh, McCooley House and Nessel had done a plan and a memo showing how they would be able to mitigate any floodplain impacts. We addressed the lighting, I believe, uh, we, by assessing the lighting that exists, and showing the photo metrics on how it extends out into the parking area. Uh, we, we relocated the dumpster as requested, to get it out of the, uh, side yard, and, um, I just was handed Dave's comments. So, al- also with Green Plan's comments, they asked for revisions on the long-form E I R, which we submitted, and I don't see any comments on that, so I'm hoping that's satisfactory.
So to be all, to, to be fair, David, our secretary was gone, and so the, our professionals got their memos a little bit, you know, got the information a little bit late, so I didn't hear back yet from, from Green Plan, from, from plan, um, but I'm sure we will. So, and, Dave, you wanna go over yours?
Sure. Okay, uh, comment number one, the name used for termination indicates that proposed auto repair is permitted in the D B district and subject to special use permit following two hundred dash fifty-one. And the existing lot area, forty-five thousand three hundred ninety-eight square feet, is less than that required for the combined uses sixty thousand square feet. Plan now proposes consolidation of tax lot two thirteen dash one dash thirty, and tax lot two dash two thirteen dash one dash thirty-two point one, which will now meet the required lot area, consolidation of the lots shall be conditioned in any site plan at all, and that's been like that for months now, but we just wanna make sure that consolidation. Number two, floodplain and floodway boundaries have been shown on the sheets C one, C two, and C three to identify any disturbance in the areas. Disturbance within the floodplain will be subject to a floodplain development permit to be obtained from the village building department in accordance with chapter one oh seven of the village code. Number three, wetland boundaries have been provided on sheet C one dash one, and a note has been provided stating that there are no disturbances to the wetland areas proposed. Number four, a landscaping plan has been provided.
Number four, a landscaping plan has been provided consisting of twenty-six box and trucks and six dog and trees. Land board should review the plan for adequacy.
Which, if I may comment, we increased the amount of landscaping from our previous submission.
Uh, number five, and if this application requires referrals to the Orange County Department of Planning based on its proximity to the Orange County coverage trail. And remember, without reviews back from the county.
Um, I can, I'll wait, let me look in the folder. But, keep going.
Okay. Number six, project is subject to Architectural Review Board review and approval. Number seven, cover letter indicates that a floodway analysis mitigation plan and memo has been prepared by committee to engineering and submitted for review. Although the plan was received, no memo was provided. So, is there, there's a separate memo?
Memo, I just checked my cover letter, we had it listed as enclosure, so whatever, whatever happened, we'll, we'll re-submit it tomorrow, we'll send it out electronically, though we do have it now.
Okay. Um, flood in a rain, the flood mitigation grading plan has been provided, this plan should be signed by a New York State licensed professional engineer. Number nine, flood mitigation grading plan proposes the use of module flood control barrier kit provided by Garrison Flood Control. Is this intended to be temporary measure or a permanent one?
Temporary.
Number ten, an analysis complying with section one oh seven of the Village Code should be provided for company of the plan. And that, presumably that may be a memo, the, the.
Yes.
Okay. And then again, just as, uh, the chairman mentioned, our review was limited, just due to the limited amount of time that we had available between meeting, sending referrals, and.
Yeah.
Further reason for you.
Yeah, we, we're happy to be on the board, uh, usually, she's, Terry sends out a acknowledgement that you're on the meeting and.
We weren't that organized.
It was left to me and Liz, and going through Terry's stuff, it was very organized, but we just didn't understand it.
So, my apologies for, you know, being overruled, which, I didn't know that we were with anyone. Um, so, you know, we agree with all the comments, we're ready to move ahead. Uh, the only thing I would ask of the board is item number six, uh, the architectural review. We're not proposing any renovations or modifications to the exterior. So, uh, how can we assist in, uh, answering that question to the board's satisfaction? Um, perhaps we'll, we could take pictures of the existing exterior and add that as, uh, documents, or you have verification, or you have some kind of documentation. Show compliance with the.
Are you pa, are you painting, doing any sprucing up on the outside, that, gotta be doing sprucing up on the outside, paint or something?
Uh, to, I'm being told, no, not at this time. Cause we're not changing any of the exterior openings, all the, all the head doors exist, the man doors exist. So, right, uh, right now, at the moment, I'm being told that, that we're not proposing any more conditions.
But it needs to be cleaned up, either painted or something, cause it, it's not, uh, you can see the building is old.
Yes.
And lived down. However, I think it could be, uh, painted at least to have a, a, at least a fresh look, a clean look. And now it's looking a little windy, you know? It's been empty for a long time.
Well, Marilyn, that's a valid point.
Yes, um, nice.
Nicely.
And, and then we would like to see what's planned to be done.
The, the color of the paint.
Yeah.
No eyebrow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not, not on this one. Uh, you know, I, I really don't see that as a, uh, a showstopper, I, I can go back to the.
It's on the corner, yeah, I mean, it's a corner of the village, you know?
That's true.
It's a busy corner.
That's.
Could use a little bit to make it attractive, that people would want to stop, you know what I mean?
Autobody shop, another autobody shop? Will there be cars all in the back there? I just, I just noticed again now, yeah. So, Dave, real quick question, so the autobody shop, that's on the bottom floor, right, the, the ground floor?
Yes.
And then that, the basement level, that's, that's on the bottom floor as well, correct?
Correct.
So the whole top is furniture store now?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Storage for all the cars, that'll be where on the seventeen M on the backside there, uh, autobody?
Yes, actually, we, uh, we look at our parking count, we, we definitely exceed the amount required. In fact, we even dif- differentiated between what's proposed and what's existing, uh, so we show that in our parking count to help, uh, help detail the plans, uh, and we, you know, we far exceed what's being required.
Where's the autobody gonna be on that?
Oh, right here, we see.
Alright, so you're gonna be storing cars there, and again, that's major thoroughfare, and we're gonna be seeing cars stored there? We just went through this with somebody else. If there's gonna be an autobody, there's gonna be cars. There's gonna be cars that are sitting, that we don't want sitting, and we're gonna be seeing them from a major road in, in Monroe, so what can be done about that?
Well, we, um, you know, definitely seventeen M is a higher elevation, you know, than the site. Uh, I'm not, I'm anticipating that the work will be done inside the building.
No, there's always cars outside.
Oh, I, I agree, uh, but yet the zoning code allows that amount of parking spaces, so it's not.
It's not part, it's storage, yes.
Well, no, we're not, I, whoever uses the word storage, that would be erroneous. There'll be no storage of cars, it'll be a constant transition, the work is done, people come pick up their cars and take it away.
So we would have the same wording as we have on.
Yes, and it's in your, it's in your code that there's a restriction.
That's true.
That only five cars can be there for more than forty-eight hours, otherwise they cannot be parked, um, longer than that, and that would be, that would be a restriction of the site and a condition. So, that's, that's in the special permit regs, so that's fifty-one D F O. Fifty-one O, that we just had the discussion on, Albert Street. Check fifty-one, it's one of the last ones, I think it's out.
We agree, you know, we'll be compliant.
I think like the other, this is a different applicant, but obviously, uh, you know, like the, the gas, the oil being leaked, you know, the random pose right there, as long as there's like a mitigation to trap or contain or whatever, you know, cars that are coming in off of an accident or.
Yeah, but, I mean, let's, it is Freeman's Autobody, that's the proposed tenant. So they know how, uh, and speaking with them, they will be recycling oil, uh, for the most part, so they know how to collect it, recycle it. Um, interestingly, the building originally was Freeman's Autobody. So it's constructed already to house that type of use. Now, uh, I'm, you know, obviously, when we get to the building permit phase, we'll have to add some things to help, uh, satisfy the building code. But right now, uh, for planning and zoning, the bulk of the building does comply with whatever would be needed for an autobody shop.
Well, and how about screening, because they're gonna be wrecked cars, and they're not, they're gonna necessarily wanna see it through seventeen, seventeen M there. You, you, we're gonna, I mean, they, they're gonna be there, and they're gonna be parking between the building and the main thoroughfare, so we're gonna see wrecked cars. So what I'm asking for is some kind of screening.
Oh, okay, there's, but there's, okay, so, there's no cars in between the building and the thoroughfare, the parking is behind the building.
Well, what do you say, behind is this way, this is, if you go to the side of this building, the road's right there. Yeah, how you, seven, yeah, it's right there.
Yeah.
We're gonna see, we're gonna see wrecked cars on that road, so what I'm asking for is screening again.
Okay, so, um, why don't I talk to the owner about providing some additional vegetating buffer along here?
That would be lovely.
Maybe that's simple, even a vinyl fence, six feet.
Yeah.
It is, that is an existing screen.
Okay, yeah.
There is? Oh, okay, if they.
That apartment was there, just, you know, if you see the, the plan.
Okay, as, as long as it's.
Uh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Barbara, you can, are you finished, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's fine, go ahead.
What I would suggest, um, because you were, you were here for the conversation on the other autobody shop, it's the same, similar considerations. The cleanup of all, cause those are all gonna be the same, cleanup of, um, oil spills and things like that, those same discussions should be incorporated into, into your materials. Um, and then just, um, please make sure you take a look at, um, section, section fifty-one. So. Of the two, two hundred dash fifty-one of the special use, uh, permit regs, um, for autobodies. So you'll, that, that you'll be required to comply with. So just take a look and make sure your complaint, your plans do, and, and also your tenant's operation complies with it, cause some of it's operational issues. Um.
One question, if I can add real quick. David, what's the, uh, the, the nature of the structure where that, for those like six parking spots are? I know years ago, that kinda was a collapse, and they, like, they even looked at that just for safety reasons, or, you know, like, uh, right on seventeen where the light would be on the left-hand side, there's probably like five or six lights right in the front of the building.
Are you talking about retaining wall?
It was retaining wall, kind of was, that big, yeah.
Over here?
I believe that's how it would show.
Would that be where they are?
That asphalt's fallen down.
Yeah, you know, it's kinda looks like the, the, that little guardrail kinda looks like, it just, it looks scary, I just don't know if anyone's ever looked at it, or, or engineering.
We show some repairs over here, the parking stops, low there, and also, um, if you go to one other plan, we're showing the fence below there.
Okay.
To kinda hide, just as a barrier between the parks. Uh, if, this is the lighting plan, if.
Okay.
If we can go to the C two plan, if that's possible.
Man of white, etch your status.
Got a lot of hats on today, got a lot of hats. Yeah, a little area, it was like the flat, five or six spots in front there, just make sure it's safe.
That's like a guard, though.
Yeah, a little guardrail, it looks like it's kinda like, you know.
C two is the second sheet?
Yeah.
I mean, which collapsed years ago.
The, the files are heavy, they, they are hard to move. There's no question about that.
Well, I'm also working with a relative dinosaur of a computer that wants to, I'm going, I'm going. C two, okay, let's see if I can get center and make it useful. Okay.
Over here.
Yeah.
There would be, uh, so the light would be kinda like right to the left, right?
Over here.
Am I bearing it straight?
The light is.
Or up a little bit, and then.
Almost where you, that your arrow, the black arrow, comes down from the black arrow, your light's there.
So it is those spots, I would just, you know, just making sure they're just safe, and I know, like I said, years ago, they, they would come down, and, 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 Sandy, or one of the storms years ago, and it hasn't really been occupied since, and I almost feel like, so as long as they've done some sort of engineering on it or something.
Oh, the, the autobody is gonna be there, where's the entrance on the autobody?
Over here.
Over there. Okay, cause as long as you don't park on this side of the building, you can just put a fence at the corner, to the cor, there. You can, and that with, a high fence will cu, will cover your cars. As long as you don't park over this way, right?
Now, the problem, Barbara, from there, if you're going from seventeen, cause I live right there, from seventeen, you're looking down.
Uh, yeah, so they put a high fence there.
Yeah, but you're not, the only way to put a high fence is to, to not see that, is across, is like on seventeen itself, you're, you're.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, if they go into that corner, if they push the cars back, and then put in maybe a six-foot fence, that, I think that's the best.
Kinda like what he showed already, I think there might be something there.
No, that's a short fence.
Yeah, sure, yeah, but it'd go a little higher.
Is that, is that where I'm talking, yeah, okay, but, but the thing is seventeen's a little higher, so you may have to make a, I, you know what, I'm gonna look tomorrow. Yeah, 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 get a better idea.
So you know what, you know what I'm more concerned about, David, and I don't know what you looked at, that's why I was interested in Ted's, and Ted hasn't responded yet, or that I've seen to, to your stuff, cause he just got the stuff as well. Um, but, you know, cause going by there, if you see, when we get those torrential rain, I mean, torrential rain, that's flooded down there. Like, that's underwater, where those cars, those parking spaces, they go underwater.
That's why, uh, well, there's no doubt, I mean, that's why M H and E did the, uh, the floodplain, uh, mitigation plan. I believe the pond that they're proposing is about a hundred and thirty cubic feet of water, so that's, I think that's a substantial amount. And, uh, and along with their memo, they're, um, uh, you know, affirming that this should handle the wa, any water, uh, encroachment upon the building.
Is that something you reviewed, Dave?
I haven't, it's under review.
Not yet, yeah.
They took a quick look at.
I got you, yeah. Okay. Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you have, you have to review the memo?
Yes.
Okay. So.
And we'll send, and we'll get that memo out again tomorrow.
Perfect.
So from a, a procedural, um, standpoint, um, and again, I have not had a chance to, um, get through, um, everything. Um, we have, we have two thirty-nine, I went through the file, at least that says it's on one drive, and I don't see any evidence that it was referred, so we, we need to do that referral. Um, agencies would be Orange County Department of Planning as well as New York State D O T. Um, does it need to go to D E C as well, Dave?
Um.
Maybe. Alright, so we also.
There's no, there's no wetland disturbance, right? And disturbance is less than.
It's less than half a acre.
Don't think you need a D E C.
Okay, no protection of streams, anything like that?
There's no wetland disturbance, I don't think so.
Okay.
Just to put you on my knees, we showed a total limit of disturbance at seventeen thousand square feet. That includes any, anything associated on this construction.
Anybody else who needs permits, because the reason I'm asking not only for two thirty-nine referrals, we have not, um, declared, made any declarations, or we were waiting the revised E A F. Um, and the question becomes, are there other agencies that we need to declare intent, or are we assuming we're the agency right off, right off the bat?
Ted was reviewing the.
Right.
Resubmitted E A F, I assume, right?
I'm gonna, I, I have a call, just to make sure.
And then listed agencies, it would be welcome to be noted in that.
Well, originally, originally, Ted, one of Ted's comments was no, because again, we didn't have the plans, Army Corps, and D E C, the applicant is representing that there is no disturbance, and that those agencies are not triggered. Uh, I would like Ted to confirm that. On the theory that he does confirm that, we would then be the sole agents, approval agency in that regard. Um, with no D O T approvals, anything like that. Um, so we would, we would assume.
No danger habitat on, uh, give up on the E A F?
There's always danger.
Go to bat, go to long ear bat. Go with the long ear bat.
Yeah, that, that, they're dangerous.
Let me just take a look at the, the, uh, E A F.
So then, at our meeting on the twenty-second, um. Okay, so we do have.
Also came up for National Register of Historic Places.
Yes, because it's contiguous.
Archaeological sites, yes. Wetlands, yes, floodway, yes.
And I think, David, we asked Jesse, I'm not sure we got the, try to fill out, that he was gonna fill out, with your historical, or he didn't have to do that?
Your wrong site.
Wrong one, on the wrong site. On the other one, sorry.
Wrong project.
I just confused him.
Just answered that question, we did fill that out, so.
Wrong project.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, the, the E A F that was submitted just indicates villages on the planning board, buildings on the building department, or any kind of corporate.
But this does, because it's contiguous, I think, cause Ted was saying that too, there's something, um, I guess they have to look at, because it's right up against the historical.
Yeah, usually, the, uh.
Political.
Responds to.
Letter from Chipotle.
Chipotle. From Chris. Yes.
Yeah.
The problem is, when you do the mapper, the mapper looks at it from thirty thousand feet, and, yes, there are things nearby, so he has to, it's incumbent on him to say, no, it's not us. Same thing with the floodway, yes, he's close to it, um, and parts of the floodway are on the property, so he has to show that the project's not impacted, so, um, so then we'll, we'll be in a position to start the secret, start the secret process, and the plans are probably far enough along that we can refer them out. Um, for two thirty-nine, as well as, while we're making those referrals, we'd probably refer them to emergency services.
And, um, anything that, you know, that adds, even though there's no permits required, D E C or Army Corps, they could certainly send the, the E A F.
And anything that, you know, Ted has, even though there's no permits required, D E C or Army Corps, they could certainly send the lead agency outside of them.
Right.
Right. So we will, those are the actions, so two thirty-nine, um, emergency referrals, and start the seeker.
As soon as we get Ted's, we'll forward it, right, Terry's back tomorrow.
Any comment letters, we appreciate, so at the twenty-second meeting, the formal meeting, where you sell leave and send everything out for two thirty-nine?
Assuming there are no other involved, Dave, assuming I don't confirm there are no other involved agencies, if that will declare our intent.
Okay, great.
And circulate.
Just a, a follow-up question. The proposal will require an engineering, and an engineering confirmation for the filing of the floodway. Will, will that floodway create, and again, what they're seeing right now is only temporary, okay? Uh, something else is going to be put there, I'm assuming, David. Um, will this create any additional flood issues downstream of the property?
Well, that's what the McGoey-Houser memo should be addressing.
That's Ted's memo.
No, no, the applicant has retained an engineering firm, McGoey-House, or an Edsel to prepare a plan, we have seen the plan.
That's the engineering confirmation that we need.
But, and there's a memo, which Dave is in the process of reviewing, so that's what should be in the memo.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what Dave is going to comment on, Dave is going to review and.
He just didn't get to that, to do that full review on that.
And I don't, I think there's an issue of whether we got all of it, I got a cover, I got a McGoey-Houser cover letter, which was in the same file as, but I don't know that that, it wasn't heavy engineering, it was a brief discussion.
Yeah, I, I just received the plan, I didn't see the MHNE letter.
Oh, check the OneDrive, I, may, maybe it's when I separate.
I ran out of time.
I, as did I, if you look on the McGoey-Houser on the OneDrive, there's a letter, I don't know, and that's the memo they're referring to, because it's short, it's one page.
That's, that's the memo that we're referring to.
Okay, then you might need a little more from them.
We just, we're gonna have to review it, I'll have to review it against the Village Code, because there's parameters in there for issuance of the, of the disturbance.
And then, is it signed, sealed by a registered engineer?
I think we're probably, we received it, wasn't, I think that was in my comments, that it needs to be, it needs to be signed by a licensed professional here.
That'll be a condition.
Right, yeah.
Clear.
Okay.
Okay, those are notes dating back to July eighth.
So, you know, we thank you for, you know, doing this on the twenty-second, then, I, I, I'm, I'm hoping that as everything goes well, we can, at the following meeting, or subsequent meeting, go for public hearing.
Yeah, and you gotta, just so you know, David, I don't know if you're here when we were talking about that, but the, there's only one meeting in November, it's the twenty-sixth.
Oh, right here, thanks, okay.
Yeah, same week as Thanksgiving, so it's, uh, it's during that week, because it's, um, it's.
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, eleventh, maybe?
It's always, it's always.
Just one, it'll be both, it'll be workshop and.
Eleven eleven.
One and done.
One and done.
There you go, I'll take that.
Efficient.
Good seeing everyone, happy for you guys.
You're welcome.
You're doing.
You're welcome.
Next, we have. Fifty-nine Gilbert. So, David, do, uh, want to go through your? And what, what's your name?
My name is Paris Stern, Vice President of Global Fire Convention, and we are seeking to move the building back for storage.
Right.
Fire sprinkler and fire control line equipment, since years after, uh, COVID, it's very hard to get material, and we're, we're trying to get more material, and we can't store it outside, so we're trying to get a building, to get the stuff in the building, so we can buy stuff and stay in business.
Okay, David?
Okay, um, thank you all, so I'll just start with the project description here from there. Project involves reconstruction of a new eight thousand seven hundred square square house building with one point three acre parcel in the G B building district. Property is currently developed with an office building, submission indicates that the proposed warehouses could be used as accessories to the existing office building that is currently being occupied by a sprinkler installation company. The new building will be used for receiving shipments, coordinating crews for work and drive necessary room for the storage of larger orders to lead in supply chain issues. The applicant has identified area variance if needed due to combined area requirements of the two uses, eighty thousand square feet, and the area of property available, sixty thousand three hundred and fifty-four square feet. Uh, we have the following comments on the plans provided. Number one, per section two hundred dash twenty-six point two B, requirements for accessory structures, the accessory structure cannot be larger than the primary structure. As the proposed warehouse building is larger than the existing principal structure, variance from zoning board appeals needed, need for variance if needed on sheet three. Number two, the property is adjacent to the U R M, Urban Residential Multifamily Zone District located to the south of property. The zoning district boundaries have been entered sheet one, however, the leader of that finding, the subject property is not escaped above shading of the zoning district areas and should be adjusted to make it visible. Number three, the landscaping plan for the project has been provided on sheet three or four, consisting of twelve shrubs and two trees. Planning Board should review the adequacy of screening provided for the adjacent residential uses. Number four, the village has adopted local law number four of twenty twenty-four, also known as the environmentally constrained lands law. The zoning table should be revised to account for any such environmentally constrained lands. Plan should also depict any, any such constrained lands. Per section four point D of the local law, during site plan subdivision special use permit application review, the planning board shall acquire that development area to be located so as to avoid these constrained lands or disturbance. To the maximum extent developed shall not be said on, or shall develop and disturb areas constrained as set forth above unless weighted by the planning board, due to the unique nature of the parcel, and in such exclusion, it would render the parcel undeveloped. Planning Board has a condition of approval, they require the imposition of map notes to ensure that these requirements are in condition for the development from there. Number five, the bulk table should be revised to eliminate plus or minus for the side yard and rear yard, where exactly twenty feet is proposed in the new warehouse. While the resident has an allowance to be divided in the location of the proposed structure for tolerance and construction, the applicant proposes the building with a side yard of twenty point zero plus or minus feet. Twenty point zero plus or minus feet rear yard, with no tolerance for area during construction. Number six, applicant should provide E D A access to the proposed warehouse, office building, complete details of signage, striking, and grade all locations. Number seven, lands should be referred to emergency services for a clean comment. And grade, grading plan should be provided with proposed contours and spot additions. It appears that the building is intended to be built into steep slopes located at the rear of the property. Grading should be provided to maintain a minimum of five percent slope away from the building foundation for a minimum of ten feet. Number nine, note twelve on sheet one should be revised to note that the property is within one row of various school. Number ten, this tradition on sheet two should be certified by a licensed surveyor. Number eleven, parking stalls should have proposed on sheet three measure approximately nine feet by thirteen feet, which is less than that required by the Village Code, nine feet by eighteen feet. Details for the striking apartments basis should be shown on the plan. Number twelve, pipe materials and indoor elevations for the closed sewer should be shown. Number thirteen, diameter and material for the existing water service should be provided. Applicants in design professionals should evaluate the existing water service capacity to serve both buildings. Number fourteen, total area of proposed disturbance has been indicated on the plan, seventy thousand five hundred eight square feet. The boundaries of the disturbance area should be identified on the plan. Number fifteen, project requires referrals in the Orange County planning, sorry, Orange County Department of Planning, based on its proximity to the town. And number sixteen, regarding the short E A F, which had previously been provided in the E A F, A, E A F indicates that the proposed building is for storage only, which is in conflict with the narrative that indicates a portion of the building will include an office space for a warehouse manager. E, question two should indicate the need for a zoning variance from the zoning, Village zoning board appeals. See, question ten indicates that building is for storage only, and that no water will be provided. Water service is shown on the plan, E A F should be revised at need. E, question eleven indicates that building is for storage only, and that no sewer will be provided. Sewer connection is shown on the plan, E A F should be revised at need. E, question sixteen should indicate that the project site is located within the one hundred and flood plain. F, question seventeen should indicate that floor or discharge is of a floating adjacent property. And then number seventeen, the planning board may consider scheduling a public hearing pending satisfaction of E C.
I had nothing planned, but I didn't see any, any E A F. I have a reminder.
Did this engineer's comment letter said E A F to be submitted under separate cover, we never got it.
I didn't see the E A F.
No, we didn't, and I'll, I'll give my updated, um, I'll give my updated comments, um, the response, this is going to the, um, constrained lands, um, response read funny, we feel that we're not disturbing land, the, the, the code requires you to evaluate and identify what are, identified as constrained lands, that's steep slopes, flood plains, anything like that. Um, your plans do indicate that there are, the a hundred-year flood plain is on there, and a portion of the site needs to be deducted, and those calculations are necessary for purposes of your variance.
Steep slopes as well.
Yeah, steep slopes as well, yeah, so, um, and I'll, I'm gonna add that to my note, I have not, um, I'm not as good as Dave, so I've not finalized my comment, I'm not, um, so those deductions need to be accounted for in accordance with the code. Recent submissions indicate that E A F revisions will be submitted under separate cover, upon receipt of such submission, the planning board can adopt a resolution to declare its intent to be lead agency for purposes of seeker, I'm recommending a, um, no, a coordinated review, because this needs to go to the zoning board of appeals, like we have done with other applicants, we would finalize our seeker review before the zoning board of appeals could take action, so that we would include seeker that way. Property adjoins a residential zone, planning board to address adequate buffering and the required parking and loading setback, um, C section two hundred dash forty-four I, parking, um, parking has to be buffered ten feet, uh, my specific concern is loading, which is two hundred feet, um, with respect to the storage unit powered trucks getting materials in and out of the storage building. Uh, so that will need to be addressed, and, uh, given the way the, the zone is, I, I have concerns about needing that two hundred view. Um, and then planning board to address that statement.
Does the board have any other additional comments to that?
This is the property here, right, the flat space we're looking at?
Yeah.
What kind of deliveries are you gonna, you getting there, like what's?
Both, trailer goes five.
Like tractor trailer?
So.
Um, trucks, truck loads five.
Tractor trailer, yes.
Yeah, are you gonna be able to get tractor trailers in through that?
So you'll need a, you'll need a loading bay.
Yeah, so the front of the new building is, has a loading bay, now, we are getting out trucks.
Tiny.
And it's not going to be different than we have now.
Well, but the problem is, you're adding.
I'm adding storage, because I shouldn't have to stop outside, leaving, having it outside exposed to the sun, because then all the pipes are dark, so it's much easier.
Do you know what the existing size of the, the fifty-nine Gilbert Street building is right now, like as far as, uh, square footage?
Five, six thousand square feet.
Five, six thousand.
Yeah. But most of that side is.
Thirty-one.
A little bigger.
All I'm proposing is that building should be sheltered, so, and people go, all the pallets and stuff outside, so this is going to the inside, and that's basically matching it into the environment, the color, same color of the building, so it's, you can decide that.
Almost nine thousand.
Change the, the.
Right there, and then you've got these trucks.
Right, no, we understand that, it's just a matter of meeting all these.
Yeah, the pallets of, um.
Yeah.
Both the pallets, so it's going right.
Tractor trailer.
You just, your, your, your plan has to, your plan has to, David, and you can correct me if I'm, the materials have. The materials have to get from a truck, one way or another, from a truck into the storage building, I'm assuming that's by way of a, a loading bay, of some ilk, either a loading zone, or bay, or whatever. Um, but the code, um, under our, our parking provisions, when you join a residential use, that loading bay has to be two hundred feet from a residential use, and right now, it's twenty feet to the building, and it's, you, you, you can't, you can't make that, um, if you're, if your building's, so, if you want to seek an interpretation from the building inspector, you're welcome to do that, um, but it's gonna need to be addressed.
Yeah, sure, I'm going just to the.
Oh, sorry.
That the loading is, you're looking at the loading, it has to be two hundred feet from both sides, is, that's why I assume, so from the front, it's basically, the truck is backing in, the loading dock is, is right here, from here to the front, is more than two hundred feet.
But the, the, it ha- it's two hundred feet from the loading bay, no, to the residential zoning district. And that red line, because your property is the last commercial property, the next zone is the U R M.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, since you're not two hundred feet from the U R, and, and unless.
How was it then, granted for this, because this building has three loading bags. And that's going to change in terms of loading.
I mean, the zone could have changed, or the codes could have changed since that time.
Could be, but I have to look in, otherwise we're grandfathered, because this has loading bags.
Your old building may be grandfathered, or your new building.
Right, you do want to be grandfathered. Yeah.
So who's doing this death determination, the building inspector?
You can talk to the building inspector, that, that's where I'd start.
Can Jim provide the, um, the land use determination?
He does, um, I didn't, it's a good question.
Don't remember.
But this has been before us.
This was.
This, this is an old application, so it could be in the former file here.
But the provision I'm referring to, setback from residential use, no off-street open parking areas containing more than four parking spaces, shall be located closer than ten feet from an adjacent locked zone or used for residential purposes. Loading spaces shall be located not less than two hundred feet from any residential district boundary, so that's the provision I'm relying on, and I can tell you that.
Yeah, I have it, sorry.
You got, you got House sixty-one and sixty-five right there.
He says, I've reviewed the land use determination form and proposed plans submitted for an additional storage building to be located at fifty-nine, uh, Gilbert Street Monroe, this property is located in the G B zoning district. Existing use of warehouse permits this proposed building with special use permit and site plan review through the planning board in accordance with two hundred dash forty-eight and two hundred dash seventy-two. No variances are required for this proposed project, thinking this that.
He may have, well, also, the loading, I will note on the plans.
But again, our, our planning, uh, laws may have changed due to the last.
I, what I will tell you is, I don't see it noted on the plan, and, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see the loading zone shown on the plan.
I don't remember seeing it either.
But one would logically have to be there, in order to get a truck, unless you're going to unload your others and daisy-chain them out over there, I don't know why you would do that.
I'll go to the old building, and then just drag it over to the new building.
But it, you may want to seek an interpretation from the building inspector, but.
Roughly, how far from the, how far from the line are they now?
Well, the building is twenty feet, so.
Twenty feet.
So it's like thirty or forty.
Well.
Because the site's not even.
Right now, I mean, this project looks like a rejection, needless to say, according to law, unless they go to Z B A.
Right, we can't move forward on it, start with Jim, and see if he realized, he might have missed the code.
He may have missed it, or the modi- or the modified code, because we said this is old.
Right, because his, his letter came, his letter came in twenty-two.
That's it, yeah, that's.
You said this is old, when, when was this first submitted?
Two years, so Jim's determination was May twenty. Two years, so Jim's determination was May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
So that's two years ago and the code has changed.
Well, code's changed pretty frequently, but, you know. So this one may have changed, so Jim may not have seen that.
But it's also not shown on the plan. There's no.
Oh, so, so, right. So he's going off your plans when he's doing that, so if there's no, and you need to load it, right. So he didn't realize. Yeah. Right. Right.
On the next meeting, or it can still come to that, can we just do the revision?
It can't come to the twenty-second of this month. It'll have to go to the twenty-sixth of, uh, November.
November.
And you're submitted, then you have till the twenty-eighth of this month to submit it.
And we, we, the other thing is, we absolutely, at this point, until we have that EAF, we can't take.
Yeah.
The project can't go any further.
So the EAF can, can still be submitted until?
We're not gonna discuss, it can be submitted at any time, but it's not gonna be discussed till the November meeting.
Correct.
But if we don't, if we don't have it, we, we're, well, we're pretty much at a standstill cause we're, we've gone as bad as far as we can without it. Okay.
And then you need another letter of determination from Jim. Okay, you're welcome. Have a good night.
He's twenty thousand square feet short.
Dave, like I said, Dave, that forty-four I has come up, has come up a couple. Cause anything on seventeen that backs up on the eight.
Yeah, okay, so we are now looking at three eighty-six Route Seventeen M. And, um, why don't you give us a quick, uh, overview of the project? And give us, oh, hey Joel.
Good evening, Joel Mann. Um, I'm Brahman associate, so I'll try to refresh my memory because I'm totally lost why I'm here tonight.
I get it. We're, we're lost why we're here too.
You're here bailing your client out.
Exactly, so, anyway, so the proposal is, there is a, uh, there's an existing landscape and building material company on the site. They actually, uh, proposing two addition, uh, one addition and another storage shed to an existing facility. Uh, so, we have a sixty by ninety proposed storage chat, and then a thirty by forty addition to an existing one-story block building. And set, a fence separating the existing residential to single-family homes. That's pre-existing non-conforming on the lot should be separated from the operation of the commercial use of the property. Um, then there is a proposed, like, uh, some bins for landscape material to sit on the site. And update, there is a gravel area on the side that should be changed to be, to be paved. So that's basically the concept.
Okay, um, I'm gonna ask Dave to review.
Okay, all right, let me go through the preliminary comments here. So number one, uh, zoning permits stored at lumber is fully materialized by special permit subject to section two hundred dash forty-eight. The applicant should provide narrative describing proposed business which discusses how the project relates to the special permit criteria. Number two, section two hundred dash twenty-six point two of the zoning code states an accessory structure cannot be larger than the principal structure on the lot. It appears that the proposed storage shed is larger than all other structures on the lot.
Just a question, is that a, that cannot, that's a principal structure?
So if it's.
If, if it's allowed to use.
Storage shed will be the principal structure?
Both will be this principal structure, doesn't need to be connected?
I don't think that land use determination was.
We do have a, we do have a land use.
We do have land use that we are, should be good on that.
Sorry, um. I'll have to.
I got it here.
I'll, I'll have to look into that issue, um, as.
So Jim's letter came on the twenty-fifth of September. Do you want me to read it, Dave, or no?
No, I, I, I found it.
You found it? Okay.
I don't know that it necessarily answers that, that.
Yeah, I guess just clarifying if that's the case, so you're gonna be taking the proposed shed and making that the principal structure than the other existing structure.
Probably, I mean, you're calling it shed, maybe you just need to call it storage building, so, basically.
Okay, we, we just had a discussion about this three or four projects ago.
The last project, is that what you're saying?
And there's existing structures on the lot.
Yeah.
A new structure cannot be larger.
No, not necessarily.
No, no, the principal structure.
The principal structure. So what you're saying is that if I have a, buy a piece of property with a barn on it and I decide to put something three times that barn.
And call it the principal structure.
And call it the principal structure?
We don't know.
I get away with the law?
It's, it, it's very, I.
That's a determination for Jim, that's the point.
I think, I think, uh, I might, might explain it, so, it depends on the use. So for example, if we have an automobile use, then you have a storage shed for some materials. That's, the storage shed is definitely an accessory structure to the automobile. The use that's proposed there is actually lumber and building materials, that's.
Right, you're saying that's the principal business.
Principal business, so, I think it's, it's like, not everywhere you can do that, but this is.
But that's why, before it gets to us, Jim has to make that determination. So just cause he can review that and say, you know, how are you looking at this? That's his, that's his role.
So on, on fifty-nine, this, on fifty-nine Gilbert, the stor, proposed storage building was clearly incidental to the commercial building that was at the front of the building, in front of the lot.
Correct.
Right, but they made the storage bigger than the business, the, the, the actual office building. Um, so I will, I have this noted to, to look and confirm, but again, Jim has to issue a determination on, on that.
All right, look into it.
I just applied to that, right, the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Dave?
Okay, um, number three, parking without litigation should be provided, which includes small uses at the site. Number four, the plan requires northbound. And number five, parking to the smaller residential structure should be eliminated on the site. Number six, chain link fencing is used to separate the residential structures from the business area of the site. Fencing at the smaller residential building should be reconsidered so that residents are not exiting, you should say exiting.
Exiting.
Of the structure into the contractor yard. Number seven, there appears to be a significant amount of gravel area in, in the rear of the site that is not observed on recent Google Earth imagery. The applicant should advise when the gravel was installed and also discuss why the proposed amount of pavement is necessary. Consideration should be made to reduce paving along the rear as much as possible to buffer the residential properties along Marck Terrace. Number eight, the area of disturbance that may have been completed without permit, as I understood it, but it was a violation.
There, there is a violation on this property.
It's the front part where the wards are, like, outside from the driveway, proposed safe, where the wards proposed six feet high chain link.
Man awake, here she comes.
So the, so the gravel in the, in the good stash from around the side, that wasn't built, was it gravel placed? Go back to the comments. The area of disturbance that may have been completed without permit, proposed disturbance should be shown on the plan. Based on the amount of disturbance that has already been completed and the additional disturbance proposed, it appears some work, a little intervention plan may be required. Number nine, existing proposed utilities should be shown on the plans. Number ten, dumpster enclosure should be shown on the plans. Number eleven, EDA parking should be provided on the plan. Number twelve, based upon available county mapping, the site contains a stream slash federal wetland and associated flooding. Wetlands should be delineated by qualified professional and these areas should be shown on the plans.
I see it's missing from the plan, so we have to re-made it there.
Okay. Number thirteen, this application will require referrals in the Orange County planning department based on proximity to the state highway. Plan should be more developed prior to this referral. And then, number fourteen, an EAF should be submitted to initiate a super process.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay.
Liz?
So, the, the subject site is, um, is before justice court, um, they did receive a violation for, um, clearing and other things without a permit, um, and also, um, violating a stop work order. Um, the applicant who did appear in court was advised by the, the court that nothing, the site, the site should remain status quo until, um, until a permit was issued. All right, so, um, at one point, the judge said, we wanna clean it up, the building department requested from the court that the site remain status quo until further approval. Um, so, I will say that I, the judge has directed me to report back, um, status of that. Um, so with that said, please get us an EAF very quickly so I can tell the judge that it's an incomplete application. All right, project is subject to site plan review and, um, special use permit. The project is subject to two thirty-nine due to its proximity seventeen M. A referral will include OCB, uh, Orange County Department of Planning, New York State DOT. A public hearing is required. Um, applicant should provide environmental assessment form. Uh, applicant should provide materials list and architectural samples for review. Site plan comments, applicant to identify purpose of twenty-foot easement shown on site plan, it looks like it's a water easement, please confirm. Property adjoins a residential zone, planning board.
Where's that showing?
There's an easement from your property to Marck Terrace, I think it's a water easement. I just, if you could confirm easement and if you have a librarian page, that would be great.
Okay.
Property adjoins a residential use, a residential zone, planning board to address adequate buffering and required parking and loading setback. That gets into eight-ten foot parking and, um, two hundred feet from a loading zone. Um, applicant appears to be paving the bulk of the site, applicant to address impact of additional impervious surface on stormwater. Applicant to address impacts on floodplain. Applicant to address traffic flows both internal and external to the site, including onsite maneuvering and site distance on seventeen. Applicant to provide parking and loading calculations. To, applicant to address signage, applicant to address landscaping. Um, and then a real fun nitpick, your proposed materials bin appears to be covering a sewer manhole cover. Top bin, there's a manhole cover right in the middle of the bin.
Need another notebook for that one. Need another notebook for that one.
Maybe I'm wrong, at least on my version, there's a top bin all closest to the building. Nothing like having a ton of gravel on top of a sewer manhole that you need to. Let's get access to that sewer.
I mean, the jacket, that's a magnet, that's a lateral, whatever, whatever, rock down, right? I assume it's lateral connection to the building, but is there, it says there's a roof on that bit. So, the whole way is to have, walk over the ground, does that make that a structure?
That would be a determination for Jim.
I might ask Jim that question, yeah?
Yeah.
Even the token almost on the side.
I'm just, I'm assuming from an engineering thing, we don't like to have stuff on top of manholes.
No, no, I, the manhole's definitely, yeah. I would also check for Jim on the, uh.
Right, on the roof on that, if it makes a disruption.
I just, I will, and I'm gonna go back to, to Dave's comment, I did look at the Google Earth imagery and, like, maybe the site date's old, but there's a lot more, there is a lot more gravel and pavement.
It's, the Google's very old, if you go on Orange County GAS, two thousand and twenty-two, you can see it.
But, um, it, again, I, I agree with Dave's comment just from a pure, that, that's a lot of pavement and there does not appear to be any sort of blow mechanism, it's just all paved. There's no, there's no lines for where the trucks go, where the residences go.
Oh, definitely, we'll get it more, much more updated and detailed.
Because you have two residential homes in the middle of a contractor's yard.
I wanna have more like the fundamental comments from the board, so I can make an advance plan and incorporate everything in.
You know what concerns me, Joel's, you know, they didn't even submit an EAF, number one, but number two, they don't seem to consider the law very important. Because they've been violated multiple times, they continue to break the law. One of the code enforcement officials had to bring the police there at one point.
I was not aware, okay.
So, so, it's, it's a, it's a big concern that a, a, an applicant does not care what the law says, that they're gonna just do what they wanna do. So we're gonna take a really, really good look at all this.
I can, I can tell you that, I know actually the owners.
And, and I'm, this is not a reflection on you because you've been before us many times, so.
I'm not the owner.
I, I, absolutely, and, and I know that.
I can tell you that, I actually know the owners and I don't think there is what, was any intent. Know them very well, they're a well-known, uh, local company here. I'm doing a lot of business with them, they're very honest people. My understanding was, you know, a lot of times when the owners are not involved in the business, people on the site, they're doing what they want since they have actually, they have excavating equipment also, so. The last time, I know what was the, they, they graded the area. So they were, the next time, when the building fit came again, they didn't stop, they were about to stabilize the area. So there was a misunderstanding between the building inspector and them, they stopped actually. So, this was the last time, but.
And just to be, just to be clear, the, the determination at, well, at the request of the building department, because of the nature of what was being moved and everything else, nothing. Okay, so no movement, no cleanup.
No, there's not, there's no, what I'm talking, what that was.
No, I'm just saying, from now on, I just wanna be abundantly clear that that site, that site is remain status quo, um, until, until you receive comments.
I'll make sure on that.
So.
Yeah.
Let's, let's make a drone picture from it.
So, just, just remember.
It's very easy to do that now.
I am under court order, I do have to report back, um, I am no longer, um, serving as code enforcement prosecutor, so I'm, but I do have to report back to the code enforcement prosecutor as to the status of the application. So if there are any significant delays, that will impact court, so just.
Plan is, I got, I got full, full permission to go ahead, only thing is, we're human beings. My office is like every professional office overwhelmed, so I will have a licensed engineer also working that as going forward once I know which direction we're going, so that, basically, I think I got most of the fundamental comments tonight.
I don't think we'll get any of the EAFs.
EAF was probably oversight from my office, we'll make sure that you have it to matter, that's. I believe it's done and somehow didn't make the way to, to you, so, because that's typically part of the application package, so.
Right.
Okay.
Again, that's the story now, and we're here, I believe, they got their message, they're here to comply. We will work with you to get this done in a nice way. Whatever mitigation, whatever pla, uh, plantings, shouldn't be a big deal, there's a, they're a landscape company, so.
So, well, the owner of there's pay more attention, or, uh, or, or figure something out, because, or, or get rid of the people that are there.
They got thrown away from another place when they got there, they purchased this property with understanding that they can move in as is. It was a whole misunderstanding, I got involved later when they already messed up, so it's.
Okay, good, all right, so, I think you have everything you need, questions?
Uh, so I will submit the EAF and I will address, uh, can I get a copy of your?
Uh, when I finish it.
Okay.
Cause I didn't get, I didn't get plans.
Everything was a little bit late, our secretary was gone.
Oh, no problem, so with that, I believe the next action, you don't have any action to do on the twenty-second because you wanna do lead agency on the twenty-second if you have the EAF, or?
No, cause I want, no, 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 so we're gonna wait till.
More updated site plan.
Yes.
Yeah, because.
Dave's comments, no problem.
And then don't forget, so. And then don't forget, so this, this month, it's the twenty-eighth is the submission. And then we only have one meeting in November, and that's the twenty-sixth.
Problem is, we have holiday from twenty, from the, from the sixteenth till the twenty-seventh. So I'm not sure how much the EAF you will get, but I'm not sure if, if I will get on the, on the October submission date a full set of plans, but what I will try to do at least. Instead of compliance, you shall have it before the meeting, even though you're not going to handle it to the meeting, you shall have it before the November meeting. I will be out of country also between the fourteen and the twenty-seventh, so.
So then we'll see in December on that.
Correct.
That's fine, yeah.
I don't know if I need to prove my uh flight ticket. I have my tickets, me and my family to Belgium, so.
In December, maybe some of the violations will be settled.
Well, this is settling the, so this is.
This is part of the settlement.
This is this res, resolution of violation.
They need to comply with what the planning board will decide on the property.
So what the court has done is um. They offer any disposition or go to trial, we usually try to achieve compliance before we offer a disposition. If the applicant makes a good faith effort to apply and get approvals, our disposition will be very much different than what it would be if they don't.
But again, I will do all my effort, things can happen that I can have. A lot of the comments need to, not need to be addressed by my office, so we'll have an engineer on that, so they can work when I'm not here. If I can make the submission, I will definitely do the submission date on the twenty-eighth, uh twenty-sixth or the twenty.
Twenty-sixth, uh twenty-eighth is submission date, twenty-sixth of November is the meeting, but for you, probably December, I guess, right. Okay, thanks, Joel.
Thank you very much, have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
Okay. I just have to sign your payment vouchers.
I think I deserve it after.